All right. Everybody hear me out there? We'll now call the this public workshop to order for October the 6th, 4:00 PM. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Can I have a point of order, please? It's actually a special meeting since we do have a quorum.
I was given one, one paper and that's what it says, so special meeting. Back with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. Lord, we ask that your Holy Spirit would be here in this meeting with us, Father. Lord, we ask that the truth would come out tonight, Lord. Lord, we ask that your will would be done here, Father. We ask that the best thing for Avon Park would be accomplished, Lord. We ask that you would protect each and every person here, Lord. Ask that you bring peace and harmony to this place, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McHear?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
All right, we have one and only agenda item here tonight. Item number four, the investigative report. What I understand, we have several members of Gilchrist Firm here to present that. Is there anything from staff before we get started?
Yes, thank you. Before we begin, I would just like to say, thank you for everybody for attending. I want to take a moment to remind everyone of the standards for decorum that apply to all public meetings of the city council. This meeting is being conducted in accordance, in accordance with Florida's Sunshine Law and all participants, council, staff, presenters, and members of the public are expected to conduct themselves respectfully and in an orderly manner. Please remember that comments or questions must be directed to the council. Interruptions, shouting, personal attacks, or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Any individual who becomes disruptive after being asked to come to order may be asked to leave the meeting. We understand that this topic may generate strong opinions, but it is essential that everyone have the opportunity to be heard in a civil and respectful environment. Our goal is to ensure transparency, fairness, and public accountability throughout this process. Thank you in advance for your cooperation and for helping us maintain an atmosphere of professionalism and respect.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
I have a point of order here for Dr. Kelly. Just to make sure we're clear with this. On the website, on all of today's papers, it says workshop. They advertise that way, so.
The website has two different agendas on it. It has a public workshop with all of this information and it also has a special meeting with all of this information on it. We did not know if we would have a quorum to be able to take action, so it was advertised both ways.
Thank you.
Very good. Having said that, you guys can take it away.
Hello. First off, I want to introduce myself. My name is Attorney Jacquin, J-A-C-Q-U-I-N, last name Gilchrist, just like Gilchrist County, G-I-L-Christ, thank Jesus. I have the pleasure of being here with my colleague, Attorney Michelle Weiner, W-E-I-N-E-R. Before I begin, I'd like to state for the record that I've given each member here a copy bound of our investigative report. They've had, from my understanding, an opportunity to at least review it. And we'd like to now do a presentation, which is what I briefed y'all about last time that came before y'all via Zoom on PowerPoint. So if it's okay with the council, I'd like to present that.
Go ahead. All right, thank you.
I don't know how it's doing, like 4K, I don't know.
Can't look at it anymore. Maybe if you just have a document, we can scroll through maybe, or is?
I think right now it's the connection is, is.
Got it.
And I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm, this is like last minute set up, so it's not going to work. I don't know.
All right, so we'll email it to you. And then can I just direct you to move to the next slide?
Apologize for the delay here.
While we're waiting, first off, I do want to apologize for the delay in getting this set up. I also want to extend my first slide. I want to thank everyone here. I actually do want to thank the council members, first off, for picking an impartial body. I don't know anybody here. And choosing our firm to look into this issue that was needed to be investigated. I also want to thank each and every witness that came before us, as well as those that didn't, that exercised their right not to come before us and talk to us. It was appreciated. Everyone was super professional and they allowed us to do our investigation thoroughly, impartially, so that we can present these findings today. I would also just remind each and every one of us that in accordance with Florida law, we do not retaliate against anybody, okay? It's been a longstanding practice for hundreds of years in my state that we don't retaliate against anyone. So that information that was presented to our firm, that's now before the board and everyone else that's in the newspaper, we are going to ensure that we're not retaliating against individuals. Furthermore, we're going to ensure that we're going to preserve evidence. There is a note that I put in the investigative report that we will ensure there's no spoliation of evidence, which just means that all the notices, all the documents that I've presented before the council here, it's a thumb drive of about 4,000 documents. There's a chain of custody of that, too. And we'll ensure that that will be preserved if the council will do anything with that information. So I just want to make sure that's clear for the record, okay?
Okay. Has that been turned over to the city at this point?
Say again, I'm sorry.
Has that been turned over to the city, the documents?
Well, we're going to talk about that in the findings, sir.
Can you turn the volume up so the whole people can hear it?
Yes, I will.
Yes, sir. You know, what we can do is, I was in the army, so we can do that way. All right, that's easy. Yeah, I think he's right.
Just per jack.
Yeah, yeah.
This isn't that big of a room.
Yeah, we can just talk about this, so no problem. There we go. Want to do a mic check here, how about that?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of an impromptu audio setup, so.
Tangle 16 is Charlie 15. Do y'all hear me now? Okay, all right, just making sure, okay. How are we looking, sir?
Wait, put an email.
Hello, hello? Y'all still hear me? Just making sure. Over there in the rear, do you hear? No?
No, no.
Okay, all right, that's all, I got it. Do you hear me now? How about that?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do it that way. Okay, I'm easy, okay?
I don't know if we're going to be able to do this without PowerPoint. I have the non-machine email.
It should have just gone through. Can you double check? All right, well. At what point do you want to?
Again, thanks for everybody's patience on this one, okay? And if it's okay with everybody? Ma'am? Oh, yeah, sure, sure. So while we're waiting.
Yeah, we will have to get you at least speak at the mic so we can try to.
Can you hold it in your hand and turn it?
Yeah, I think I can. The problem is the echo. You see the echo? Hello?
Much better.
I'm going to move it. That way it's not echoing off of hers and everyone else's. Does everybody hear me now? Okay, all right, while we, while we wait here, I think there was a good question. So my name is Attorney Gilchrist, G-I-L-Christ, thank Jesus Christ. I, I'm the CEO, President of the Gilchrist Law Firm. As some of you may know, I think I've been in some newspapers around here, is I served in the army for most of my career. I served in the National Guard. The Army right around the corner, okay? Bottom line up front is we've done a lot of investigations in my career, in the National Guard and private practice. I have the pleasure of serving along Michelle Weiner. Michelle Weiner is our senior managing attorney. We've done tons of investigations. I am by trade a real estate attorney. Like, I love real estate. That's what we do, okay? We do it for all different agencies, not just in the state of Florida, but all over the country. So when I looked at this, you're going to see some of my analysis on some of this, even though we're giving you just our investigative report, but we gave you some really good recommendations, too. And I kind of put the real estate eye on there, so you'll hear a lot of that today. Any, any other questions or anything else you may need before I jump into this?
Yeah.
Do you hear me now? Okay.
Mr. Gil, louder, do you hear me now?
Okay, there it is. There it is. I want to yell at y'all, but do you hear me?
Mr. Gilchrist, I just want to point out that if they're going to ask questions, we'll have to get them on the record.
Yeah, of course, of course, yeah. And, and thank you so much, Mayor Anderson. One of the things that we want to make sure is that when you do ask a question, okay? Because this is a record, okay? Is that you have to ask questions directly to the council members and then they've got to then present the questions on the record so that we can answer them, okay? We're going to have questions at the end of our presentation. So please, if you have notes, take notes, okay? And then at the end, we're going to ask for questions, okay?
And we'll just need the name and address for the record as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay, there we go. Here it is, okay? All right, I'm jumping right on in, okay? Maybe.
I don't drink, but I might soon.
Don't do that, sir.
Mr. Gilchrist, should you be under oath during this presentation?
Uh, not, not for me, but you guys, I mean, if there was a, you guys were planning on making a statement to me or something, but no, no one needs to be under oath right now. But again, if you have, I think Gerald's going to be here.
Yeah, that's why I didn't ask him, because I got not here.
All right, this is how we're doing it, so just go and hit the next slide.
Okay, there it is. Is it on yet, or no? I'm going to see it.
Is the air conditioning fixed at the council chambers? Let's have them there from now on.
There we go.
We can just do it like this.
Yeah, I think, I think we're good. Here we go, here we go. All right. Members of the council, may I proceed, please?
Yes.
Again, my name is Attorney Gilchrist. I first off, want to take a few minutes to thank everybody. As you guys know, the council hired our firm to do an investigation about the historic Brickell Building, okay? The historic Brickell Building. And in that regard, we looked at the procurement process. We looked at how things were purchased, or excuse me, how things were procured, the lease. We looked at issues of the transfer of title and some deficiencies that were raised by the public to the council and the council then hired an investigative firm, our firm, to look into this. As I mentioned previously, before the presentation, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank the council respectfully for doing this. They chose a body, a firm, our firm has no partiality to anyone here or anywhere here. And so we want to thank them for that. We also want to thank the members that cooperated with us on our investigation. They took the time voluntarily to talk to us. We also want to thank each and one of you. Thank the individuals that presented evidence to us, contacted our office, looked at, gave us different documents to review. We want to thank each and every one of you for that. And we also want to thank those that exercised their right to not speak to us for various reasons. So thank you. In that regard, as I mentioned earlier, in Florida, we, we strongly believe and we have a statute that protects those that are whistleblowers, right? You cannot retaliate against anybody that makes a whistleblower action in this state. That's under our law, okay? So we want to thank them for that. We want to ensure that that's going to happen with this report, so thank you. In that regard, I put a note in there about spoliation of evidence. So we have a thumb drive of over 4,000 documents that each one of us looked at to make that report that you guys see about 70 pages, okay? We looked at each and every one of those documents, from individuals that gave them to us, to public records request, to videos, to a whole bunch of things. And we're going to ensure that that, those documents are preserved for evidence if the state or anyone else do anything with this. And then last but not least, I know that last time I came before the council, I'd asked for, hey, listen, I think you need, your budget needs to be increased a little bit, okay? I wanted to make it clear that there was a ton of time that we cut on this thing because we understood the budget, but we also understood that the work still needed to be done irrespective of the budget, because it's the mission that we were given, okay? And that attune is over 380 hours of time that we're not charged to the city. It's 90 grand, okay? Not including all weekend we looked at this thing, not this morning and everything else, okay? But it didn't matter because we wanted to make sure that we got the work done, all right? Next slide, please. Here's the agenda. The agenda, we're going to talk about the scope. Again, what were we hired to do, okay? We're going to talk about our methodology. So in any investigation, if you're doing it from a law enforcement agency, you're doing it at an investigative firm, you've got to get our methodology. How do we look at evidence? How do we look at our findings and our recommendations? You're going to hear it today. You're going to see the summary of evidence that we found, including our findings, the relevant law. There's a lot of law on this, but we're going to give it to you, okay? A lot of law on this. And then our analysis and recommendations. And again, they're only recommendations. Next slide. In any legal investigation, there's always a disclaimer. In this regard, this disclaimer is very important and I want to take a minute to describe it. As previously mentioned, the council hired our firm as an independent advisor to them to give advice on what happened. They are our client, quote unquote, okay? That being said, because of full transparency, we want to thank them for that. They waived their, what we call attorney-client privilege. That means that what we talk about is supposed to be between us. They waived it so that they could have a public forum, fully transparent, so that you can hear live and direct what the findings were. That's important, okay? And I wanted to be clear that that's, that's been the case since this RFP went out for us to even go after, okay? And I appreciate everybody, specifically the city manager, of making it clear that that's the intent here. Next slide. Limitations of report in any investigation. Could be if I worked for the sheriff's office or anyone else when I did this work, is there is limitations of your report, limitations of your evidence. So what is that? It's limited on the evidence that we're able to get. As a reminder, guys, this was voluntary. So we did not have subpoena power. We did not have warrant power on this thing. And candidly, there was good reasons as to why we probably shouldn't have it, because we got a lot of voluntary evidence that was just given to us, okay? But also, because we didn't have subpoena power and warrant power, certain individuals were not required to talk to us, even though we asked. You want to hear about that today? That being said, there may be mitigating factors as to what our findings or recommendations were. Could be, could be. But we wanted to be clear to you guys about that mitigation impact, okay? Next slide. The purpose of the presentation, I think you guys understand the purpose pretty clear, transparency. I can't say enough. Transparency, 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 okay? Next slide. Methodology. So as I mentioned before, we wanted to be clear of how we got our information, how we got our evidence, and how we made our determinations, okay? And the first thing you do when you get an investigation, I look at evidence, okay? Where's the evidence? Well, as some of you know, the day we got this contract, I think that day, we got documents sent to us, which we appreciate. But it wasn't just those documents, okay? It was public records request. It was looking at deeds and documents and pulling things from different agencies all over the state to look at this stuff, to independently get chain of custody, to make sure that those documents were legitimate, legal, and they were full. We didn't want to get incomplete documents before we made certain recommendations. And we did that, okay? So I put in here, public records requests, public notices. One of the things that we put out there, and I'm going to thank the, the local newspaper on this, is we put an ad, put in a newspaper, put in the Facebook, you know? Make sure that people knew that if they had information about this case, this issue, that the council would hire us to look into, that there was a mechanism to get information to us. And they did. And so we thank you for that. We reviewed all evidence, conducted extensive legal research. We categorized facts and applied them to the law, the current law. I think that's an important note there. Next slide. I'd like to now turn it to my colleague, Attorney Weiner, summary of the evidence.
Thank you, sir. All right, good afternoon, everyone. Next slide, please.
Come back a little bit.
Can everyone hear me? All right, all right, pretty loud. All right. So a little bit about the background of what we were pulled into to investigate here. So on November 23rd, 2021, the city of Avon Park issued an RFP number 21-12 for the renovation of the Brickell Building here on Main Street in Avon Park. In April of 2022, that RFP was awarded to Daniel Salls as the sole bidder. Construction began on the project shortly thereafter. On April 3rd, 2023, Highlands County issued a CO, a certificate of occupancy, for the entire building. And on April 6th, 2023, the city of Avon Park executed a warranty deed purporting to transfer title of the Brickell Building from the city of Avon Park to Daniel Salls. Next slide, please. So the sources of evidence we looked at, we did extensive witness interviews. We reviewed video evidence. We reviewed numerous city council meetings and the minutes for those meetings. We looked at the city's contracts. We looked at email correspondence that was, that we received from city individuals from our public records request, as well as email correspondence from private individuals. We reviewed conflict of interest disclosures, property records, public statements, and media coverage. Next slide, please. Here's a list of the witnesses we interviewed. These are all detailed in our investigation report. And the next slide, our witnesses who declined interviews, which was, of course, their right to do so. Next slide, please. All right, so what are the key facts that we gleaned from our investigation? The first fact is that Mayor Garrett Anderson did personally fund the construction of the Brickell Building and he personally worked on the construction in that building. And that fact was not disclosed to the city council and it was not disclosed to the public. The next fact is that Mayor Garrett Anderson and Councilmember Brittany McGuire had a personal financial stake in the, in the project. And again, that was not disclosed. Additionally, Daniel Salls was an employee of Garrett Anderson and that fact was not disclosed. Finally, the transfer deed has numerous deficiencies, including an issue with the defective attestation that calls into question the legality of that transfer. Next slide, please. Here you can see, this is, this is a screenshot of the lease that was signed on April 11th between the city of Avon Park and Daniel Salls. You can see on this that although Mayor Garrett Anderson abstained from voting, he did sign that lease. And you can see that in the bottom right-hand corner. Now, attached to the lease was a form copy of the warranty deed. This is done really typically in, in real estate contracts, where you attach a sample deed to a contract so that the parties entering into the contract know what that final deed is going to look like. It's done all the time and it's that, that deed, that sample deed is not intended to actually be signed. It's there as just, as just a sample. Here, that deed was inadvertently signed or erroneously signed. And if you could go to the next slide here, you can see that that deed was signed. Again, it was signed by Mayor Anderson and it was attested to by Ms. Hardman. If you turn to the next slide, this is the screenshot of the final deed, again purporting to transfer title from the city of Avon Park to Daniel Salls. Now, Deputy Mayor Jim Bernard did sign this deed. However, there's an issue with the notary paragraph because it lists Garrett Anderson's name rather than Jim Bernard's name. Another issue with this is that you need to have two disinterested witnesses to, to witness the, the signing and that also is not present here. Next slide, please. This is a screenshot of an email from Garrett Anderson to Stephen Madre. This, this email shows very clearly Mr. Anderson's personal financial stake in the Brickell Building and his expected financial compensation upon the opening of the gym. And we found this to be compelling evidence to support the conclusion that there was a personal financial stake present here. Next slide, please.
Now let's turn to the law. Next slide. We listed quite a few statutes for the public to look at, as well as in our investigative report. We kind of went through each and every one of those elements to show you how to look at the law, but I wanted to point out a few of the claims today. Next slide, please. Leo analysis, next. Okay, the first one is misuse of public position. In Florida, you can't use your, your public position for any financial gain for yourself or your family. It's been longstanding law in our state and it goes from the top down. In this case, the council voting patterns that we kind of alluded to before, the email that we mentioned as well, you can't have a stake as a official, a public official, and receive personal gain from a procurement or any other action. So that's one very easy cause of action. Next one. Conflict of interest, the voting conflicts. So what's supposed to happen is when there is a voting conflict, and it happens a ton, not just here in Avon Park, but in a bunch of other municipalities, the official has got to disclose their potential conflict. And then they abstain from voting. It's a two-part analysis, right? So you're supposed to do both. In this case, there's quite a few examples of minutes showing participation and even what Attorney Weiner just mentioned, of individuals that had conflicts, but he still voted or had an influence on the decision at hand. And those are the other concerns as well. So, uh, next slide, please. A violation of public procurement law. I'll turn it over to you, Michelle.
And before I go into this, you're going to see a lot of overlap in these causes of action. That's because the same set of facts can give rise to numerous different causes of action. So if it seems that we're repeating ourselves or it seems, you know, repetitive, that's why. But it's important to understand that the same, the same case of wrongdoing can give rise to numerous different causes of action. And one is violation of public procurement law. So just like Attorney Gilchrist said, officials have to disclose and abstain from voting on, on matters where they or their relatives had a financial interest. And, and that's an important point, right? It's even if they personally don't have a financial interest, if their immediate relatives do have a financial interest, that still constitutes a conflict of interest and they still need to abstain from voting in that matter. Next slide, please.
Thank you. Yeah, so Sunshine Law violation. So one of the reasons why, even in this special meeting, is that business for the city is supposed to be done during business. So during these type of events, right? And that's one of the reasons why I think when I came before the council earlier, I said, hey, I think I want several hours of this because the business of this needs to be happened out in front. We have something called Sunshine Laws here. And that's very strict here in Florida, okay? So business is supposed to happen openly, transparently in front of the public, not behind closed doors. And one of the things that we saw here is just the inconsistent meeting records, inconsistencies in the signatures, as we just alluded to. So as Attorney Weiner just mentioned, some of these things are the same kind of incident over and over again, but it's violating multiple laws to protect the public for those type of issues. Next slide. Fraud and official, I got it, okay? So the fraud and official misconduct, and we can go quite a bit on this one, but fraud is, is extreme here in Florida. I mean, we have a lot of protections to protect individuals from fraud, but you can't commit fraud and also be, have official position at the same time. It's like a double whammy, so to speak. And we have a specific statute on that case. And so you can't use your public official to falsify documents or knowingly mislead others in performance thereof. One of the big facts we saw in this thing was the issue of the certificate of occupancy. And I think Attorney Weiner had alluded to quite a bit in the report discussion just earlier, is that you can't get a certificate of occupancy for, let's say, part of the property, but it's a. of occupancy for, let's say, part of the property, but it's supposed to be the whole building, right? I just, you just can't. And then have a financial interest in that too. That in itself creates a issue of fraud, and it also shows that by the person having a position, that they can circumvent the whole process. There's also discussions in our report about deleting clauses. This is probably one of the first times I've seen a deed in any municipality that doesn't have a reverter clause. A reverter clause is a clause in real estate that municipalities put in there to protect themselves if a party doesn't do something. It just reverses the property back to the city. Like, just, it's the first time I've ever seen one. But there could have been a reason as to that, but again, alludes to the same issue about fraud and official misconduct. Next slide, please. Breach of fiduciary duty.
So what is a breach of fiduciary duty? So you may have heard the word fiduciary before. What does that mean? That means that you hold a higher level of trust, that there's a higher level of trust between you and the person you serve. Elected officials have a fiduciary duty to the members of their community. That means that more so than just me and a person down the street, their job is to protect the best interests of the people of the city that they serve. And if you breach that duty, that gives rise to to action here. And, you know, here, approving the transaction with undisclosed with undisclosed conflicts, violating procedures, these are all breaches of the fiduciary duty. Next slide, please.
Okay, breach of the lease agreement. Again, I said I couldn't help myself with real estate. So in this case, there is a lease. So the developer gets a lease, and then they get a lease from the city so that they can renovate the property, and then they'll get title later. There were numerous conditions in the lease, which were actually done really well in the lease, one of which is to get a certificate of occupancy, another one's supposed to get permitting and various other things. If fraud happens, and the party gets a certificate of occupancy and all these other things, then that's a breach of the lease. And then the deed that comes from that, okay, should be void absentia. So it should just be void within itself. I mentioned that issue because the the lease was actually written very well. It had numerous protections in there, but because there was fraud that allegedly happened, it creates a breach. And what was really interesting, I found in the lease, looking at it with my real estate hat, is that they have a provision in there, which I want to talk about in detail, because I'm sure it's going to come up in a question, about attorney's fees. You know, a lot of attorneys always like to see if that phrase is in there. That means if if I win, you got to pay my attorney's fees. That's actually in there. It is. So if you breached that lease, and then the city's got to do something, and they win, you get their attorney's fees paid for. So it's something really to look at here. So I know I put it as breach of of lease agreement, but it's breach of lease that then created this this defective deed, but there were some real remedies in the lease, if there was in fact a breach. Next slide.
All right. So we're going to talk about our recommendations here next. But before we get there, I wanted to take a moment and talk about what you, the public, can do about this. I know that there's a lot of strong feelings about what has happened here and what the findings of our report are. So what are some some remedies that you have? I know there has been talk about what are the avenues for removal of office for individuals who may have committed these acts of malfeasance. One one path is through the governor removing, governor removal, that that is absolutely possible. There's a couple of different ways that can happen. One is that if there is a complaint filed and evidence of malfeasance or misfeasance, the governor can remove a sitting council member from office. Now, if criminal charges are filed, if they are arrested for a criminal charge, the governor may remove them from office. If they're convicted of a criminal charge, the governor must remove them from office. So it's important to understand that that may versus must there. It's it's permissive. The governor has the power to do to do it if there's an arrest or a complaint and findings of malfeasance or misfeasance. It's compulsory. The governor has to do it if there's a conviction. And next slide, please. The other avenue is that there is the path for a recall vote. That power lies in the people, and there is there is an avenue to recall an election in the under the laws of Florida. Next slide, please. All right. That takes us to our recommendations. Next slide, please. All right. So a summary of our recommendations. There's really three, three things that the council can do here in light of our report. The first one is to take civil action with two different remedies that that are kind of really two main remedies. One is to get the Brickell Building back, to void the deed transfer and to reclaim that building back. That's absolutely a path forward. Another one is to get financial remedies. So restitution to the city for the harm that's been caused, where Attorney Gilchrist was talking about reimbursement for attorney's fees, reimbursement for the cost of this investigation, other harm that the city has has suffered. That is absolutely a path forward under a civil action. There's also part of our recommendations that we'll talk about today is governance reform and also ethics and accountability.
Next slide, please. Civil actions. I made it very clear on this slide that, again, our job was to do an investigation. We are not the civil litigation firm. I'm not wearing that hat to do this, but these are some recommendations, okay? Highly recommend if the council wants to go this route, they hire a civil litigation firm that does commercial real estate. This is, there's plenty of them here in Florida. So the first one is, I had mentioned, we had mentioned before, is there is a defect. I mean, it really is a cloud on title. I mean, any real estate lawyer can look at it and be like, hey, why aren't there not two subscribing witnesses? How is it that the notary section, they call the juror section, is not correct? There is definitely a cloud on title. So the way that you fix clouds on title in real estate is a quiet title action. Any, this is Tim Circuit, but any judge can look at a quiet title action and determine if there is a cloud on title and who actually owns what. And with all the various things we found in this, absent that, just looking at the actual deed, there that is a quiet title action, you know, one-on-one, okay? The other one is seek declaratory judgment to avoid any tainted transaction. So declaratory action in Florida is asking a judge to just declare that something happened, or should have, was the real intent of this thing. And so they could declare that the deed is defective because of the lease issue I had briefed about earlier. So the only reason that the deed even happened is because the lease had provisions in place that said if a certificate of occupancy happened, if all these different conditions happened, then the city would vote, and then they would transfer title over to you. You could get a declaratory action just saying, hey, that the deed is defective just on that, because those things didn't happen. You could pursue breach of lease and precision claims, we talked about before, in the lease, they have provisions in place for attorney's fees. I mean, they actually do. And whoever wins, get their attorney's fees back. I mean, so that's definitely something to really look at. In Florida, we have unjust enrichment as a as a civil action. It just means that a party just can't be unjustly enriched. They just can't overwin something. And I think there is plenty of discussions here, in fact, showing that one party may have been unjustly enriched by this whole transaction. Next slide. Governance reform.
All right. So part of what we looked at in our investigation is, is how did we get here? What happened to lead us, and by us, I mean the city of Avon Park, to a situation where where this has happened? And and that has led us to recommend a number of governance reforms. First of all, a transaction of this magnitude should not happen without checklists, legal reviews. You need to have a lawyer look at the certificate of occupancy, look at the the lease, do do make sure that all of the requirements have been met, make sure the certificate of occupancy is for just that one, just that one business rather than the that than the whole building, right? The deed couldn't transfer unless the certificate of occupancy was for the whole building. So someone needed to have done that due diligence. And there needs to be a process in place going forward to make sure that transactions like this don't happen without that due diligence in place. In that regard, we also recommend having some subject matter experts, a repository of subject matter experts that the council can call on when you have complex transactions. Council doesn't know all of all of the details of these types of things. That's why you have experts that you could rely on, who can educate you, and who can say, you know, these are why you might want to keep a reverter clause in, or this is why you might want to make sure that this permitting, you know, you don't know these things, right? So you need to have those subject matter experts to help you. We also recommend having a standing ethics committee to review potential ethics concerns like this in the future. And integrate a procurement policy to make sure that contracts of this magnitude go through the proper permitting. Next slide.
So ethics and accountability. One of the things that we highly recommend is that, you know, the council just consider a zero tolerance, you know, policy for any type of ethics violations, any type of conflict interest. It's it sounds like it should already happen, but because of where we are, even the fact we're doing this here today, to help instill the trust and the confidence back to the people of Avon Park, as well as to the council, we just recommend that. Just again, a zero tolerance policy about anything regarding that. Also, just some training. I mean, I can't say enough. You know, in our state, we've got a ton of, I said Gilchrist County like the county, my last name is the same as the county. Gilchrist County is small, is a small county. Sometimes having smaller jurisdictions, you don't always get as many as much training, let's say in Orlando, you know? And I just recommend just doing some more ethics training and just procurement training. Because as I learned today, interestingly enough, the armory that I used to work at, which is not too far from here, about 10 years ago, is now is apparently owned by the city of Avon Park, and they leased it to the National Guard. Did not know that when I was out there in the range. Like, I just didn't know that. But the city owns tons of buildings. And so these type of transactions can happen again. And so just recommend just more training on ethics, procurement, the sunshine law, just to everybody, okay? Next slide. You know, last but not least, like, before we get into the Q and A, again, I just want to thank everybody here, specifically the council members, for giving us an opportunity to look at this issue, impartially, to not have any undue influence over us. They just let us look at this, present our findings, and present it to you publicly. That goes a long way, and it supports, again, the the rule of the sunshine law. So thank you for that, and I'll turn it back over to the council for any questions.
All right. Got a few questions for you. Is there any evidence of financial benefit to me from the Brickell Building transaction?
Yes, sir.
Could you state that?
Well, the evidence that we have regarding the financial benefit comes from the emails that we have. As far as direct evidence, we don't have any direct evidence, because, again, you wouldn't speak with us.
Okay. Is there any evidence that I have any ownership in the Brickell Building?
No, not personally, no, sir.
Or any company that I own?
Well, you're, as I understand, your wife is the owner of Spa Malibu, who wanted to put a spa into the Brickell Building. And in that regard, I would say that that is a ownership interest.
Spa Malibu has an ownership interest in the Brickell Building?
I would say that Spa Malibu has an ownership interest in Spa Malibu, which has an interest in the Brickell Building. I don't, I haven't seen Spa Malibu's lease with Mr. Sauls. So no, I have not seen any evidence. Yes.
Were you aware of the Florida Commission on Ethics complaint and subsequent findings?
Yes, sir.
Was that taken into account?
Yes, sir. And I'll say that the Commission on Ethics did find probable cause of ethics violations, but declined to take action.
For what?
For what?
Did it pertain to the Brickell Building?
Yes, I believe it did, sir.
Okay.
I'd like to add a little bit to that, too.
Go ahead.
Yep, thanks. Is that investigation involved multiple conflict of interest statements from 2018 to 2022? So to Attorney Weiner's point is yes, but it also wasn't directly related to the Brickell Building. So it's kind of a yes and no response?
The complaint wasn't directly related to the Brickell Building?
It was in part, in part. There was multiple issues in there. If you look at the findings, the findings cited multiple disclosure forms that were cited by you from 2018 to 2022.
Right. But I believe none of it had to do with the Brickell Building?
The time period it was, though. Mr. Anderson, again, you can look at the attorney's report.
Sure. Okay. You said the total cost of the Gilchrist firm has charged, it said he was $94,000, I believe it was?
No, sir.
No, sir. Oh, no. Clarify that for the record, yes.
I thought it was all 90.
No, no, no. I think it's an important point. Is the uncharged time that the firm incurred? So again, our budget was only $87,000, but we actually did an additional $94,000, not including this weekend, not including today.
Okay. So the actual fees were?
Eighty-four. Was it eighty?
It was eighty-four, I think. Eighty-seven, I think.
Eighty-four thousand.
Eighty-four thousand.
So just to emphasize that point, we we put more unpaid time into this than paid time.
All right. Just asking the question. And what is your hourly rate?
My hourly rate on this project is $300 per hour.
It's our reduce rate. You could call it the reduce rate.
Mine, too. 300 for both.
I believe yours is higher on this, sir.
I think it's 350 if I'm not mistaken. Yeah. But I actually charged, I think, one hour on this thing, because we expended the budget so fast.
So one hour for you and the rest?
I mean, don't quote us on that. I'd have to look at the bill to see how much we we bill for each everyone's time. And we can certainly do an analysis. The city manager has our full billing statements.
Sure. Do you have roughly an idea of how many hours were spent on this investigation?
I would say over a thousand hours, over a thousand. I would say over 700 hours of my own personal time was spent on this investigation.
Okay. Have you examined what the cost would be for the city to take the recommended civil actions and or criminal actions?
No.
No. Do you know what the value of the Brickell Building was prior to the RFP?
No.
No. Do you know what the value of the Brickell Building is now?
No.
No. It's outside the scope of what we're looking at.
Okay. Do you know what the tax revenue generated by the Brickell Building before the RFP was?
No, sir.
Yeah, it was also outside the scope of our investigation.
And I would assume you don't know what it is now either. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Very good. That's all I have for now. Any other council people have questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
So the statute of limitations, is there any statute of limitations on a on a situation like this?
There are multiple causes of action, so multiple ones. So it depends on which one, if you want to start with the one that Mayor Anderson's referring to, which is the civil actions. The quiet title, it's five years. So you got a little bit of time on that one.
From the date of discovery.
From the date of discovery. That's correct. Yeah, five years from the date of discovery. Some of the public official ones, yes, I'm sorry. So the cause of action for the, thank you. So for the cause of action for the quiet title is five years from the date of discovery. So date of discovery of the clouded issue. For the public notice ones, I think it's three years, but I have to look at that. We change it every year in the statute. So I've got to look at it now. But I think it's three years. The sunshine law one, we've got plenty of time on that one, if memory serves me correct, maybe five years on that one as well. But those, that's the best of my knowledge. I have to look at, research that issue for you, ma'am.
So the measures, what measures do we have to pursue to get the money back for this investigation and further litigation?
Again, as Mayor Anderson mentioned, there's definitely a cost benefit analysis that I would recommend that the city, with the city attorney, look at. But the easiest course of action would be the civil action, the quiet title action, and or the breach of lease. I mean, the lease was written very well. And if a civil litigation firm determines that there was a breach, just look at any of the documents we send in, and and that they're the prevailing party, then they're, then the city gets their money back. So.
Okay. So regarding the criminal aspects, how can we take out, how can we take it out of the authority of the state of attorney for the 10th Judicial Circuit?
Can you please repeat that question again, ma'am?
So our our district is the 10th judicial. How would we take it out of our district? Any kind of civil aspects, criminal, I'm sorry, criminal aspects?
I guess I guess the question is, how do you, you're in the 10th Circuit. So how do you get out of the 10th Circuit for criminal issues?
Yes.
The state. Yeah, I would have to go all the way up to the state. That that conflict that you just described happens all the time in different municipalities that.
Okay, so we can be done?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Once we move forward with the quiet title, I'm concerned about the tenants losing their space. Is that, that's the last thing I want to happen?
That's a valid concern. And I think that's that's part of the cost benefit, oh, sorry. That's a valid concern, and I think that's part of the cost benefit analysis of the city. You know, I will acknowledge that before the RFP, the building was unusable. It was in terrible disrepair. And the goal of the city has been to get businesses downtown and to revitalize downtown. And for all of the issues that we're talking about, as I understand, that has happened. And so I And so I think part of the consideration of the city council and the public in weighing the cost benefit of what to do next is, is recognizing that you want to maintain that revitalization. And I would advise that you retain a, a, a civil litigation firm to have that discussion. There are methods forward, you know, I'll just throw out a few, that, that, an alternative dispute resolution situation where, where perhaps a lawsuit is filed, or maybe a lawsuit isn't filed, but maybe there is a path forward, an amicable path forward, where the city gets some, some restitution, but the tenants are able to, I think that is a possible path.
So, there is an agreement that we?
It's possible that you could, that the city could, could enter into an agreement with, I would say, Mr. Salz as to restitution, or, I mean, these are, I'm brainstorming here and, but that's a possible path forward.
Okay, 'cause I just, I know that we have a lot of momentum right now.
Yeah.
With the new tenants that are in there, and, and that's the last thing I want to see, is for them to lose any of their momentum, or, or their being able to go forward. So, if we do turn this over to FDLE, we wouldn't be on the hook for investigative costs, correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay. The hook, we would be on it for the administrative time and attorney interjections.
Correct.
Okay. So, you also mentioned in your report that there were federal violations. How do we get those to the proper federal authorities? And if, if, is that something that Dr. Kelly can do, or is that something that a legal counsel would have to take care of?
I'm sorry, Attorney Gilchrist, before you answer that, can you tell us what the federal law that was violated first?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. So, you want, which one do you want to do? So, the, there's numerous statutes, the fraud is the easiest one, the conspiracy ones we talked about before. Conspiracy and fraud are the easiest federal, federal charges. To answer then the question of how do you get something to, to this, how do you get them to the US Attorney's Office, right? So, how do you get it to the US Attorney's Office, I think is the question? It can be done a lot of different ways, so anyone can contact the US Attorney, they are our US Attorney's Office, so you can contact your local US Attorney. People do that all the time. I swear to US Attorney's Office at one point, so, a long time ago, but that's one way to do it. Another one is that the local law enforcement can refer it up, and we talked before about the FDLE. FDLE actually can refer it up, too, depending on if they want to. We did mention that there has been some talks about various US Attorney's Offices down south that have eyes on this thing, so that may be an easy, just phone call to make if you want to go that direction.
Okay. So, in your opinion, at what point would a shade meeting be recommended, or maybe a strategy meeting of some sort?
I didn't hear that question, I'm sorry, ma'am.
You know, I don't know if I'm ready to ask that one yet, so I'll go back to that. So, how does it work if the building has a mortgage as far as the quiet title?
Okay, yeah. Does Salz have a mortgage?
I believe so.
Okay, I got it. So, happens all the time. So, again, there's a cloud on title, so let's just start with the principle, there's a cloud on title, we don't know who has ownership on it, but, but someone has a mortgage on the property. What can happen is the judge can determine who owns the property, but then also determine who should resolve, who should conform the mortgage. So, I've even seen it where judges have changed who the mortgage will go to, to the new party, and have them kind of negotiate, kind of to your point, Michelle, about alternative dispute resolution, like talk to all the parties involved, because if the, if Salz has a mortgage on the property, and the judge determines that they don't own it, y'all own it, then I can see that the judge could change the mortgage, make the mortgage or, make the, Salz pay the mortgage back, or cancel the mortgage altogether, because he didn't have interest in the property when he got the mortgage, right? So, that's one of the theories that's there. But, but again, every judge is a little different on how they look at this, and I think, do you know when the mortgage came out, by any chance, ma'am?
Uh, not without looking at records, no.
If it was like an old mortgage, that would be a harder issue, but newer mortgages, because this thing's only from 2022, it's not going to be that hard.
I think it's newer than that.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be that big of an issue, respectfully.
Okay. So, is that something that bank, I mean, I don't, I'm just curious how a bank wouldn't see that, how they wouldn't catch that mistake?
Oh, sure. So, how would a bank not, not see this thing? Yeah, sure. So, long and short, is that banks rely on title insurance, and here's my kind of title insurance class that I typically teach to different clients. Title insurance in our state is the industry that ensures title to ensure that a bank can rely on title, buy them out front. But, there are, sometimes title agents make mistakes, it happens. And so what probably happened is that if he got a mortgage from a reputable bank, say Wells Fargo or something like that, they surely got title insurance, surely got title insurance. But they could have made a mistake. And unfortunately, or fortunately, I've seen it where the banks, let's say it's a big bank like Wells Fargo or something, they used title agents from different states. And let's say in the state of South Carolina, or North Carolina, whatever it is, and they only require one witness, and Florida required two, then I'm sure they would miss it. So, hopefully that, that answers that question, ma'am.
Yes. So, I think that that's all I have on that for now.
If there was civil action taken against Mr. Salz, or anyone else for that matter, to try and take the brickle building back, would there not be an unjust enrichment claim against the city at that point?
That's a counter.
For the money that's been expended?
Yeah, as a counterclaim? Yeah, there's an argument there, too. The, the, one of the, the big issues on this is there's a potential breach of lease, breach of contract, and there are damages. So, in order to, I mean, this is like basic breach of contract, but it's a breach of, you have, you have to have a contract, then you breach it, then you determine damages. The damages is going to be the, the harder question, to your point, Mayor Anderson, is what are the damages? Are the damages, all of the money, everything going back to them? What about the extra money that Salz and whoever else put into this thing? That's going to be the calculus of the damages. So, it's not really an unjust enrichment claim, but it's more of determining how much the damages are that the city should get back for all of this. And it shouldn't be a windfall this year.
That was my next question, is how exactly are you describing the damages to the city? How was the city damaged?
Say again, Mayor Anderson?
How exactly are you claiming that the city was damaged?
Respectful to everyone that's here, the fact that we were hired to look in this thing, and that we did not charge all $200,000. I would say that's probably some significant damages that have to be looked at.
So, you're saying the city was damaged because of the investigation?
I think, well, I think, I'm sure the evidence will support that the city members here would surely argue that they have been damaged by having to have this investigation and spend the money for this, and other things. They could have used this property for something else. But I think there's, there's definitely an issue for our judge to look at as far as what the damages are. But if you want monetary damages, the bill for this should definitely be discussed in that regard.
Attorney Gilchrist, could the city look at that they could have been damaged by possibly having a, a, possibly a million dollar building stolen from them? That could have been, could that be a damage to the city?
There, there's a lot of damage discussions. What I, what I would rather just focus on is that element. That is an element that would have to be looked at, is what are the damages? And most of the time, judges are looking at monetary damages. And as I alluded to before, in the lease, it says the prevailing party gets their attorney's fees back. And the fact that you guys have spent not 200 grand, but 80 something thousand dollars for us to deal with this, is definitely something you should be looking, looking at as far as damages, in my opinion.
Attorney Gilchrist, I'd like to, I'd like to ask some questions, and I'd like to talk about the statute of limitation. You gave different, mostly five years. Are those due to the date of discovery, all the ones, pretty much the date of discovery going forward?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Ms. McCure asks, can the court move, this, if we were to have, go to court, can it be moved out of the 10th Judicial, Judicial Circuit? And the question is, would we have to have a reason?
Ma'am, can you repeat the question? I think one of the members.
Can you hear me? That's what somebody said. She wanted to know if we can move, if we decide to go to court with this issue, could we move it out of the 10th Circuit? And my question to you is, would we have to have a reason?
So, are you talking about a change of venue?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you could do a change of venue, and you could have to have a reason, and show that for some reason, the venue of the 10th Judicial District is not an appropriate venue, but that happens all the time, change of venue. I didn't, if that was your question, Ms. McCure, I don't know that I understood.
Oh, no, I, I got you.
And I would just say, I would really recommend that the city, if, with these questions about a statute of limitation, it is not as simple as a yes or no, it's really, it depends, and there's a lot of variables that can affect a statute of limitations. And I would, I would highly recommend engaging a civil litigation firm, at least to have a consultation to discuss those issues, because that is beyond the scope of just what we did in our investigation, and I think a deeper dive needs to be done. And I wouldn't want the city to miss a timeline.
Okay. And my next question is, Attorney Gilchrist, I noticed that when I went through all the different statements that the, the different individuals had made statements on, I wanted to know if I can elaborate on some of those statements, because I'm a little confused of, I want to, I want to have a, when I walk out of here tonight, I want to have a better understanding of what they said and why they said it, and did y'all go and explore what they said?
It makes sure I understand your question, Madam Councilwoman, is, do you want to inquire as to what was said in the statements, the summaries, or?
Yes, sir.
One, one recommendation I would have to the council, and again, I, I know that everyone's here and they want to see things, is the council will have all of the actual statements, the video, like you'll actually have it. And again, there's a discussion about if the council wants everyone else to see it, I'm not sure, but you're going to have all of the statements that were given, again, voluntary, and you can listen to it yourself.
No, that's, that's not what I'm talking about, Attorney. What I'm saying is, when I had my interview, I was asked specific questions, and when I said something, they went a little deeper, they wanted to know what I meant when I said that, okay? So, as I read some of the statements, not all, but some of the statements, there were particular statements that was being made, and I wanted to know, whoever interviewed them, did they go farther and ask them, what do you mean by that?
Yeah, my recommendation would be is to take the, the videos that we're going to give to y'all, and you can actually see it for yourself, ma'am. But because the investigation report is closed, it would be inappropriate to like open it back up and, and have the council then cross-examine them on more information when the report's done, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions, Ms. Taylor?
Pretty much, that's, most of my questions was on the different statements that individuals made. Ms. McCure pretty much answered all the questions, other questions that I had, other than those questions that she asked, most of my questions was on regards to particular statements that was made.
And I'll just comment on that as well, Councilwoman Taylor. You know, every effort was made to make those summaries as complete and inclusive as possible, but as you know, some of these interviews were over an hour long, and it was impossible to put all of that detail into, you know, one page of a summary, or this thing would have been 500 pages. So, I do encourage you to, to review the, to the, review the videos, and I also will say that, even if you see us not asking a follow-up question, that doesn't mean we didn't investigate it further, and, and every effort was taken to be as diligent and complete in this investigation as possible.
Okay. Does the council have any more questions?
I have just a couple. You mentioned that you, you did have involvement in Avon Park before you were stationed here, or something along the lines of that.
Yeah, so, when, so, I was in the Florida National Guard for, let's say, 11 years. Avon Park had a, an armory not too far away, you know, maybe about 10 years ago or so, they used to let us do ranges, I think, over there, when I first got in, but I haven't been there since, so. So, it was kind of cool to kind of come by and kind of see that it looks the exact same way it did about 10 years ago.
So, what years were you involved in Avon Park then? So, 10 years ago, what was the, what was the range?
I was never involved, but what I said is, I was in the National Guard, I did one training, to my recollection, about 10 years ago, at the armory over there.
And then a deployment, were you deployed?
Uh-uh.
No.
Nope.
Okay, and where did you learn about the RFP?
Great question, that's a very good question. So, if anyone looks at the Gilchrist Law Firm's website, they'll see that we do a lot of federal procurement. Yeah, yeah, I got you. Do you hear me now, sir? Yeah, you hear me? So, about, if you just look at our website, we do most of our procurement work in the federal system. I mean, you just type my name in, you'll see that I do tons of real estate law, core engineers, DOD, all over the country. This past year, there's been some changes in federal procurement, and so at that time, we decided to look into state procurement. You know, I'm, you know, we do real estate work, why don't we just start looking at real estate? So, I Googled, RFP Florida bid 25, for about four months. I picked up, looked at a contract in High Springs, I looked at one in some other places, this and that, looked at things, and then this is the, this is actually how I found it. Literally me just doing Google and getting into local procurement, because we've been doing it so long in the federal system, respectfully. Didn't even know that this wasn't even an issue, until after we did Google, found that there was this RFP, I think there was a pre-bid meeting, we sent one of our colleagues down here to look at the pre-bid thing, said, hey, it's real estate law, I love real estate law, let's look at this thing. And that's how it happened, ma'am.
So, when you sent one of your colleagues down for the pre-RFP meeting, did you have any conversations with anybody at the city, any citizens in the city?
What was the question, I didn't hear?
When you sent your representative down for the pre-RFP bid with the meeting, did you have any interaction with any citizens, or city staff, or council members?
I, I didn't, but I'm trying to think is?
Unfortunately, our colleague who came down here has transitioned to another opportunity, is no longer with our firm. I do believe that she was approached by some citizens while she was down here, and she mentioned something to us about it. I don't know anything more than that.
And what's her name?
Stephanie Maines. Why did I, her, Stephanie Maines.
So, is that usually part of the process, when you come down for the pre-bid, you go ahead and interact with citizens that would be involved?
It's not, not part of the process. I mean, we don't do a ton of local procurement, as, as Attorney Gilchrist said, we're new in this world, and came to show our face and see what this was about, and we were approached by citizens, and weren't, we weren't rude. I mean, I think she was, she had a friendly conversation with them, and, and then went on her way.
And do you know which citizens those were?
No, I don't. No, it didn't make it, yeah, I was her two levels up supervisor, so.
So, does she keep record of this, when she comes down to a pre-bid meeting? Does she write down these things and report back to you?
Not that I'm aware of.
That's not part of the processes being?
That's not part of our process.
Okay. How many times did you speak to each of these witnesses that provided, that you have a written report for?
So, every formal interview is documented in the report with the date. There were, as you know, Ms. Sutherland and Ms. Miranda have done some work to prepare, did some work before this RFP was issued, and we did speak with them in an informal setting, not in a formal interview, when we started our investigation, and we have talked to them a couple times throughout, but the substance of the information that was used for our report is documented in our report.
So, why would you not document all information that you received from potential witnesses? Why are some of the meetings considered informal and some considered formal? Why are some of the meetings considered informal and some considered formal?
That's our process.
So we're privy to some of the information that they give, but not others? You get to decide-
You're privy to all of the relevant information that, that we found relevant for our report.
Okay, so that relevance is solely determined by you guys?
Yes, ma'am.
Not, not the council, even though the council hired the firm?
They hired us to, yeah.
Yeah, so, so each council member here, we actually asked to interview. Some individuals on the council decided not to, that is their prerogative, no problem. But the council also, in the RFP, they listed that the sole individual we would report to, apparently for various reasons, would be the city manager, Dr. Kelly. And so that was the individual that we reported, kind of, our, our weekly status reports and everything else, too.
So those weekly status reports, did they include information on those informal meetings with the citizens?
I can't recall.
I can't recall. I, I can't recall.
Are those in writing?
Yes.
Yes.
So we can, we can see those requests, the updates?
Sure.
You also mentioned that you did reach out to the people who declined to interview multiple times? How, how many times would you say? And was each person reached out to the same, same number of times?
Do you want us to start with you, or do you want-
Sure.
I'm gonna have to pull my notes, I don't go off the top of my head, and it, I don't, I don't know, and it was four months ago, so I do have it in my notes somewhere, but-
Yeah, I don't know, but again, I would just offer that the, specifically the council, knew about this investigation, asked us to look into this thing, that we candidly should not be asking them multiple times for the same request. I was gotten disappointed in part that we didn't get all the council members to just openly tell us whatever issue, including if they had an attorney.
Right, well, my, my question was, because you stated in the report that you reached out multiple times, so I just wanted to know, how many times? And did you reach out to the individuals the same number of times, or?
No, but I, I don't know if you recall, if you want us to tell the public how many times you believe we talked to you? It was more than once.
I have one email.
I believe it was a text message as well.
It was a text message.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Did, okay.
A couple of the other ones, you've already answered for these. Did you look at the building department's investigation report?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I didn't really see any mention of it, other than maybe a statement of that's why it was not reliable, or some, something along those lines?
We didn't find it relevant to our inquiry.
You didn't find the building department's investigation into the CO relevant to the investigation of the Brickell Building's CO?
We found that it was relevant, that they did an investigation, but we didn't find the findings credible or dispositive to our determination. So we gave it the, the time in the report that it deserved.
Okay, and is it usually your method of approach to reach out on social media, to ask for input from the public?
100%.
Okay.
And not only that, it's not just, that is in most investigations nowadays, including if this thing is referred to the federal law enforcement? Yeah, they're surely going to ask for individuals on social media, and look at your social media, too, by the way, to determine if they're, I'm not finished speaking, to determine if there's any relevant facts. The fact that we weren't getting all of the information we needed, we asked individuals that may have some information on social media, we got some that way.
And did you follow certain citizens' Facebook pages?
No.
No, I mean, I don't even have Facebook, but, no.
Any social media pages, you didn't follow any of the citizens?
No.
Okay. What went into your decision as far as whether or not you determined a witness was credible? Because I noticed some you said were credible, and some you said were not. What goes into that decision?
My training and experience.
Say that one more time?
My training and experience.
Okay, so could you give us a little insight into your training and experience of, when you're looking at someone, or you're listening to someone, what are you looking for to determine whether or not they're credible?
I got it, okay. So a couple things. So you could say, at least for me, you could say the course I took at the National Prosecutor's Office in California, on the Department of Justice, that's a good training that you get there. You could say the, the Judge Advocate General's Legal Center and School, Advanced Criminal Law Course, that I've got the highest score in, that helps, too. You could say the National Guard, which we were just talking about. But to your point, to Attorney Weiner's point is, doing multiple witness interviews, most law firms that do investigations like we do, you just have experience working with different witnesses. And also, it's not just the witness, it's the cooperating evidence on the back end. I'll pause there, because that's important, okay? You could be shaking, you could not tell me the truth, which happens often when you're talking to witnesses. But it's the cooperating evidence, and it's the documentary evidence. If you heard my methodology earlier, I didn't even talk about a person. I wanted documents, documents, from the source, where I can ensure that they were accurate, then I talk to a witness. You can lie to me all you want to, but if I look at the documents and I can tell that you're lying, then guess what? That does determine if you're credible or not.
Okay, so does that go, go to say, then, that each of these witnesses that you determined as credible, each statement that they made, you have evidence that each statement that they made was the truth?
It means that as, on the whole, we determined their, their testimony to have credibility or not credibility. And when making that determination, we looked at the matter holistically, and we looked at what other witnesses told us, we looked at what the documents said, we looked at the facts in front of us, we looked at the contracts that were in front of us, and we looked at it in its totality, and to make an overall determination of credibility or non-credibility. Now, does this mean that every single fact in there is verifiable? No. Because like we said at the very beginning, we don't have subpoena power, we don't have warrant power, there's a lot of facts that we don't have. So it's, it's, it's a recommendation, and it's a determination, it's not a fact. And that's an important thing. Our rec, our determination of credibility is not necessarily a fact, but it's our determination, based on our training, based on our experience, based on the thousands of hours that we put into looking at 5,000 documents, to, to determine the, the overall veracity.
So if you found that there was a part of a witness's statement that was untruthful, and that could be verified untruthful, would that no longer be a credible witness?
That, that portion of what they told me would not be credible, but I don't know that I could blanket say everything that person said is not credible. I, I just don't think I can make a blanket statement like that.
Okay. That's all I've got right now.
Any other questions from the council? Anything from the staff?
My, Jerry Bier, City Attorney. So I, I guess there's some things that I have a difference of opinion on, but I, I don't think there, need to go into them now. But there was one here that I, I think needed to be changed. At the bottom of page 24, in Ms. Hardsman's testimony or discussion, says, she noted that he appeared to have a, that he hasn't-
I can't, I can't hear or understand you, sir.
There was a statement that said that Mr. Schrader had, he appeared to have a close relationship with both Mayor Anderson and City Attorney Bier, stating that then-city Manager Schrader and City Attorney Bier had known each other since the 1990s, from their time at the sheriff's office. But I've never worked at a sheriff's office in my life. And I didn't know Mr., I didn't know City Manager Schrader until they became City Manager. And actually, I don't even think I met him until he came to a city commission meeting that I was at. So I, I just, not, not a big deal, just wanted to clarify that.
That's what, we reported what was told to us.
I understand. I didn't know where the mistake came, but it was such a serious mistake that I wanted to make sure it was clarified. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Okay. If there's nothing else from the staff, from the council, or if there are questions in the audience? If there's nothing else from the staff or the council, is there questions from the audience? We just have to state your name and address, and then ask your question. Obviously, there's been issues with hearings, so please speak loudly.
Hi, everyone here?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Dr. Joanne Moniz. I live at 64 Lake Bird Boulevard. I am one of the tenants coming into the Brickell Building that Councilwoman McCarver was talking about. So I'm, I wanted to throw up, to be honest with you. I wanted to throw up, because I'm gonna be opening, hopefully, in a couple weeks. I've put a lot of energy and money into this, and I'm very, very concerned about what is going to happen. So I think that's a very important point. You know, you have myself, I know Sophie's Cafe is here, I didn't look around to see if the poorhouse is here, who's having their song, opening in two weeks. It's a big deal. It's a big deal for us as, you know, business owners.
We absolutely, I, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the council, I would not want any of your momentum forward to be disrupted. And, and that is one thing that I will absolutely stand on, is no interruption.
I think that has to be part of that.
We welcome you, and we want to continue to welcome you, regardless of whatever happens.
So I think, from my point of view, I mean, you know, obviously, this is a timing issue for whatever may happen. I think for those of us particularly in the building, I think we do need to be kept in the loop of what may happen and how that may affect us. Thank you.
Ma'am, I have a question for you. What did you say your name was?
Dr. Joanne Moniz.
And Dr. Joanne, are you from Avon Park?
Yes, I am.
My question to you is, did you have any information on what was going on in the city of Avon Park about the Brickell Building before you signed the lease?
No, ma'am.
You had no idea?
I heard rumors, I heard rumors, but that's all it is, it's rumors. I have no firsthand knowledge. I'm a business person who wanted to move in somewhere. My very good friends from Sophie's said, hey, there's a spot open next to me, why don't you talk to the landlord? That's exactly what I did, signed the lease, and now I'm a couple weeks from opening.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Maria Sutherland, 900 West Main. And just a dovetail on what the doctor said, there is an existing business in the Brickell Building right now that was threatened not to have its renewal done by the developer. And I would like to reiterate that that owner of the fitness center ought not to be lumped into anything that loses momentum, because he definitely wants to stay. But aside from that, I had some questions of the council, and I don't know if the attorneys answer or the council answers. But I just wanted to say that info, information, McGuire asked how they obtained information. If you recall, we had a meeting where I went up and Dolores Miranda went up, and we talked about the concerns that we had, based off of the public records that we provided to the council. And that was the night that you all decided to do an investigation after an entire year of denying the public accountability? Because you had the opportunity to take care of this in February of 2024, and three of you voted against it, and here we are today, a whole year later, actually 18 months. So the ones that were part of the inquiries or investigation, I actually reached out to the firm, because I was not called. I also had provided them some information prior to that, a booklet of all of the data that I had acquired, along with Dolores. So whether they used that or not, I don't know. Clearly, they didn't use it all, because they had a lot more stuff than what we had. Like some council members, we have a choice to participate in the investigation, as you decided not to participate. And I'd like to ask the council members that did not participate, why didn't you participate? If you're about accountability and transparency, why does the public have the purview of knowing what your thought process is, and not participating in this investigation? Yeah, he won't answer. Mr. Mayor, are you going to provide your American Express and Bagwell lumber records going to be available regarding your expenses on the Brickell Building? There is a record of your expenses, of the money that you spent and the vendors that you used. If you're not gonna provide that, how did you plan on getting a return on your investment of those material and labor costs? Did you do all that work for free and provide all that money for free? Or did you just give away over half a million dollars, like you claim you did to your partner, Mr. Salz? Is that a gift? Can I be on your Christmas list? On the public meeting, the mayor's wife during a public meeting stated that she had spent over $100,000 in the development of the building. Was that also a donation to the Brickell Building project? And isn't it a violation of ethics for McGuire to have continued voting favorably on the building lease transfer after it was publicly known that her sister-in-law had invested in the building? A year later, it was in the paper, she came up to a meeting and stated that she had spent over $100,000 in the building, but yet you continued to vote, Ms. McGuire, on favorably passing that lease over to Mr. Salz. That's an ethics violation, conflict of interest. Misfeasance, malfeasance, abuse of power. How compelling is the fact that the mayor personally recruited and retained a fitness center while the RFP was being advertised, all along wanting a 50% interest in the fitness center revenues in accordance with perceived fraud? If that is not the case, and you didn't make any money off of it, Mr. Mayor, then why were you trying to force Mr. Madre into a 50-50 split, where you would be balling in the keys after making all that money off of all of those individuals joining the gym? Was that all made up? And speaking of the reverter clause, that Attorney Gilchrist referred to as very rare and having been removed from a contract, it was you, Mr. Mayor, who made the motion to remove the reverter clause from the Brickell Building, and it was Ms. McGuire who seconded that clause removal instantly, with barely any discussion. And I commend, at least Jim, and I know Moniz also voted against that, but that motion passed without any great discussion, despite the city attorney's insistence that it remain in there. I think you guys committed fraud on the taxpayers, and I would like to see that the city council pursue the getting back of the building and allowing the tenants that are planning to be in there, the whole feeling that they will be safe and being able to open up a building. And by the way, in regards to rumors about the building, it was in the paper a year ago, all these things were taking place. Mr. Anderson actually went on the radio and bragged about how much he had already been spending time in there. The public knows. So no matter how you try to paint that you didn't make any money off of it, the intent was there, it was there, and we all know it.
Anyone else? Just have to give your name and address for the record, please.
Jane Benham, 605 South Egbert Street, Sebring, Florida. I have a couple of questions, some that were answered, but all this information was pulled from your investigative report. When you put out your solicitation for additional information related to the sale of the Brickell Building, where else did you advertise that ad? I know you said newspaper, but I only saw the public notice was the Avon Park Scoop, but did, not if it was something that the newspaper took it upon themselves, or the city, I'm talking about your law firm?
I believe that we're only responding to questions from the city council. So if the city council wants to ask us a question, we'd be happy to respond.
Same question.
We, we advertised on the Avon Park Scoop and on the, in the local newspaper. I believe it was the Highlands County News? News, thank you.
Okay. I believe you shared it on your per, your attorney page, and they just shared it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because we don't follow the Avon Park Scoop, so we can't post-
Yes, you do.
No, we don't.
Yes, you do. Would you like me to provide that before you leave?
Well, I personally do.
Excuse me, I didn't interrupt any of you. You do follow the Avon Park Scoop, and I have screenshots and records of that.
Okay. Well, in any event, in any event, I don't know that the relevance of that, but it was posted on the Avon Park Scoop, and it was posted in the, in newspaper.
Okay. Being that your office is in Coral Gables, correct? Three hours away from here? I just found that odd that with only 52 followers, that you would choose Facebook as a good source of advertisement. I mean, I just, I went through your, your Facebook, and I haven't seen that you've ever done that before, unless you've had other Facebook pages.
Is there a question from the council?
Can you please stop interrupting me?
No, there's not.
Okay. However, I also did find that odd that during this investigation process, that you would follow the Avon Park Scoop, and that was my next question, was that, well, maybe if you stopped talking, you would hear it.
We'll have to keep it down in the audience, please.
So that was my next question, was that if that was a normal practice, that you follow people that you're interviewing during an active investigation of yours?
Ms. Benham, would you please direct your questions to the council and not the attorneys?
Okay, sure. So on July 1st, their solicitation ad on Facebook, even though it's now deleted, read, "If you or anyone you know has information related to the sale of the Brickell Building, please contact us." Per the investigation packet on page four, they stated that their scope of investigation was focused on the circumstances surrounding the sale, lease, and development of the Brickell Building. But they interviewed individuals that had no information pertaining to the Brickell Building at all. And here are some examples- And here are some examples. Mr. Garibaldi explained issues with a separate RFP pertaining to 101 West Main Street. Made multiple allegations, but you stated, and I quote, "He was not able to provide any evidence to support his accusation." But Mr. Gilchrist or someone from his law firm still deemed him as credible and well-informed. Ms. Piple explained issues with a separate RFP, same address, 101 West Main Street, with similar issues as Mr. Garibaldi, one of her agents at her brokerage. She also brought up some, uh, issues that do not pertain to the sale, lease, or development of the Brickell Building, made accusations, but again, and I quote, "But could not provide specific examples of the same." But she also provided a detailed insight into a parallel city transaction that you stated wasn't verified. Again, allegations and information were provided with no proof or wasn't verified, and yet you deemed her credible as well. For both interviews, you wrote that they responded to your solicitation for information on Facebook. However, your Facebook solicitation wasn't simply for information. It was for information pertaining to the sale of the Brickell Building, in which both interviews didn't provide, but you still included them in your investigation packet. Seems irrelevant, especially since the information they provided doesn't seem to fall under the scope of services you were hired for. Another interesting interview was Dolores Miranda's. The objective was to understand the permitting and inspection process related to the Brickell Building CO, CO, sorry, and to obtain insight into potential misconduct or favoritism involving Avon Park staff, officials, and including building official Eric Longshore. You stated Dolores has much experience in fire inspection and code enforcement in Kissimmee and Orange County Fire Rescue. But I never read anywhere where she issued building permits or conducted any fire inspections in Highlands County or the city of Avon Park. I just find it strange that on the list of people that you interviewed or reached out to, I didn't notice the Avon Park City's Code Enforcement Officer or the Fire Chief of Avon Park who conduct these fire inspections. But yet a private individual who conducted their last fire inspection over five years ago in another county, not employed with the city nor the county, and no experience with either departments in our area, would be your source of, again, credible information. A safety concern I have is when Ms. Miranda stated she was personally aware of an inspection that had not taken pace, place on her home foundation. She called her contractor and raised a concern that the concrete was going to be poured without an inspection.
We need to start counting minutes because this is a...
The next thing she knew, then... Well, I keep getting interrupted.
Well, let me interrupt you because I'd like to know what your experience in estate law is.
Well, this is a public comment.
Are you almost done with your statement?
Almost.
Okay. Please keep it down. Let her finish.
The next thing she knew, an inspection was entered into the computer system even though no inspection had taken place due to the limited information provided in your investigation, because this was all from the information provided. I guess I'm wondering if she knew no inspection was conducted regardless if it was in the computer system or not, why would she allow a contractor to move forward with pouring concrete on her foundation? Being such an experienced inspector, one would assume that the safety would be her top priority. And maybe she would have brought those concerns to the county commissioners. And if she did, it just wasn't listed in this investigation. But yet turned a side eye and allowed it to continue on her personal property. I also find it ironic that Dolores seems so concerned about permits and inspections on a building that she doesn't own, but was okay with no inspection happening at all on her house. But at least hers was in the system. For $84,000, I wasn't expecting the amount of errors throughout the investigation packet. I also wasn't expecting any answers to be inconclusive and very disappointed at answers provided in allegation four and eight, where no evidence was provided to support the allegation. However, you believe that the evidence may exist even though it wasn't turned into your investigative team. Just seems like your answers were no better than Mr. Garibaldi's and Ms. Piple's to make allegations without proof. I guess I just expected more factual answers.
So would you, would you like to answer my question? No? Okay.
All right. Next, there was a gentleman walking up before. Name and address for the record, please.
Sarah Piple, 100 East Main Street. So I just need clarif, I want to clarify the record here since Ms. Benham made some very strong opinions. She has no experience whatsoever. Um, Emilio Garibaldi and myself are, I am a broker and she's an agent that works for me. My resume speaks for itself. I am a broker of commercial building.
Comments up here, Sarah. Come on.
Oh, okay. Again, I have experience. Emilio and I have sold quite a few commercial buildings. We have brought new businesses in it. And my statement was because my RFP that we did at 101 West Main was treated totally different than the RFP for the Brickell Building. The benchmarks that have been placed that I need to do are astronomical compared to what was done at the Brickell Building. So why were all those benchmarks removed and my RFP has the most stringent benchmarks ever seen? Even another contract that you so generously, generously gave $30,000 to, Main Street program, all benchmarks were removed. There is a pattern by certain individuals and the city council that do favors for their friends. That's all I have to say.
Just give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Alex Dean, D-E-A-N. Uh, my temporary address is, uh, 3835 Arlington Street, Fort Myers, Florida. Um, and I'm a small business owner that's looking to relocate. Um, looks like there's a lot of small business owners in here. Um, I'd met Garrett Anderson, uh, hell, what, 10, 12, 15 years ago now, uh, because we deal in some of the same industry. And I've kind of been looking to locate somewhere between, in the central Florida corridor, somewhere between roughly Fort Meade and LaBelle. One of the main reasons I want to move my business is because of the corruption I've dealt with down in Lee County and the city of Fort Myers, um, which has basically turned them into an anti-business, uh, community for people wanting to invest there, people wanting to bring other big businesses there or small businesses because of the level of infighting and attacking that is done between anybody on their county commission or on their city council. Um, I can tell you this, I, I didn't even know Garrett Anderson was the mayor of this place until four or five years ago. Um, you know, because it never came up and, you know, we knew a lot of the same people. I don't know that most of them even knew. It literally was just one person saying to another, hey, I know where there's a great community you can live to come and bring your family. Uh, he didn't say, because I'm the mayor, anything like that. And then it came up to, well, you know what? Uh, I know where you could probably lease a spot for your small business or bring your small business here. So then I started looking into it because I got the referral. And I can tell you this, that as a small business owner, I would never bring my business here. For one thing, I'm looking at something that, that is, uh, a, a big flashing red flag to anybody that wants to lease in that project over there. That, uh, I remember seeing that building just a couple of years ago when it was ready to fall down. So I was kind of excited when somebody came along and built the thing up. And hell, what, there's four tenants there now, right? I think a lot of you people are here. You've got employees, right? So, I mean, that's a great thing, right? It's brought in more tax revenue. It brings in, you know, you guys have the highest sales tax that a small, that a county can have in Florida. So it brings in more sales tax. It brings in more property tax. It brings in more business. And then this is how it's spent. And then with the investigation that, because again, I don't give a rat's ass about this building or any of that. But I can tell you this, what I saw when I read it and what I heard today is you're conflating leasing, leases with ownership. Well, that right there tells me I can never lease a business in this, uh, city here because when a, uh, right here, a couple of comments that, well, if somebody's wife leases a place, that conveys ownership of the property in which their wife leased, that conveys an ownership interest to that person. Wow. Okay. So if I lease a place, that means some uninvolved third party is going to have an ownership interest in it because I leased from them? That's, that's a, that's a novel new approach to law that I've never heard of. And then when I hear that this, uh, investigation was whether you charged or whether you didn't, you were practically salivating at the opportunity that, oh, we'll be able to charge attorney's fees if we do this next thing. I heard $200,000. I heard $84,000 that it was charged for, some 96 that it wasn't or whatever. So I heard that kind of money and I'm thinking, well, there's two buildings, what, right across from the Brickell Building, right? How long have they sat empty? Why aren't those being developed and fixed up with this money and getting more tenants in there? So that people like me and others can come and do business there. Why aren't the roads that bring them there being, that money being spent on them? You're not a very big city. I looked at it. You had about 5,000 people total voting in the last election for the council members. So couldn't that money have been better spent to develop some projects that would have said, hey, guys like Alex Dean and his business, then he's going to tell somebody else. I'll tell you this, so now am I going to be under investigation? Because somebody who simply, to me, I thought, loved this city and loved this community, never said, I'm the mayor, never said this, just said, hey, move here and bring your business here. But apparently now I'll be under investigation because, well, that didn't meet sunshine law, did it? Because he is the mayor, well, I guess he should have said, in here, he should have put it in the newspaper or what? I, I, I mean, that makes no sense.
Sarah, I think what you're forgetting is the elected official part of it. Would you like to elaborate on that?
Sure. Um, so the sunshine law, which has been, uh, there for decades, when you're an elected official, uh, you should be conducting, uh, your official duties during business hours in an official form that is public. The reason they call it the sunshine law is because the sun, the shine, the sun shines on you, right? So it needs to be open. Thank you for that. Um, again, uh, the mayor and anyone else can go out, have gas, talk about whatever this is. But if there is business that's being conducted in their official capacity, it should be done in an open forum to, again, show transparency and also ensure, uh, instill confidence amongst its members. So that's, that's the point. Counsel.
So if I'm here, uh, and bringing my business here, um, and then I decide five years from now, hey, I might want to run for city council, does that mean I have to liquidate my business? You don't want small business owners sitting on the city council?
No, but you better make sure that everything you have is claimed on the correct form.
And right now, that right there tells me why I don't want to be, not what you said, but the way you said it. Look at you already attacking somebody who's saying, I want to bring a business here and this is...
Wait a minute. I'm not attacking you. You came up here aggressive and I'm answering you.
And I didn't start pointing my finger at you, so you need to show some respect as well.
Oh, I need to show respect. Okay, I get it.
I, I have a question, sir.
Yes.
Um, I, I heard you give your address to Fort Myers.
Yes.
What brings you to the city today?
What brings me to the city was this meeting. Like I said, I was looking into moving here.
Mm-hmm. How, how did you know about this meeting?
Uh, because I started following this about three or four months ago, um, when I was looking into different places to move to and also to lease for my bit. When he said, hey, we've got a place, of course I'm going to do my due diligence, just like I did. And I learned, I sure as hell don't want to go to LaBelle. So I'm doing my due diligence to see where I could go. Obviously, I've taken LaBelle off my list. So I want to go someplace that is welcoming to small business owners that are going to bring more employees and more people here.
So pretty much you've already said that this is not a place where you would come and start a business, right?
Well, I'm trying to find out if it is or not.
Well, I think you already said it.
Well, you know, and I patronize a lot of the businesses here. I go and eat at Little Italy. I go, until this started happening with this Brickell Building, you guys were number one on the list. Until this started happening with that and I realized where, where the tax dollars, where the money's going to be spent. And it doesn't seem like, you know, it seems like, and instead of everybody in here supporting small business, it seems like everybody in here is infighting as well. I never saw that when I was out in the community, not until this happened. And like I say, I've been coming here for about, what, 12 years? 12 years, every few months for 12 years.
All right. Well, that concludes your time, sir.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else?
Nobody made comments, though.
All right, all right. We, we can't have any comments out in the audience. Yes, sir. You'll, you'll have to give your name and address for it. We'll have to keep the comments down in the audience. All right. No more comments out there. All right. That's enough. Order. Yes, sir. Name and address, please, for the record. All right. Keep it down. Keep it down, sir. Keep it down.
Yes. Chris Danzer, I live at 676 Memorial Drive.
Yep.
I am a small business owner in this area. I'm a federally registered investment advisor. And I get all kinds of questions on where people should put businesses, where we think it's going to grow. That's a main one. When I'm doing home loans for people, hey, what do you think about this area? What do you think about that area? It goes for anything financial I deal with. When we have issues that come up in different areas of people doing things or supposedly doing things, the idea of corruption never bodes well. It could be nonprofits that people don't think they're spending their money right. And when they ask me about it, I have to tell them, look, I wouldn't do it. And when people say, hey, what do you think about opening a business in Avon Park? If there's double standards running around, I can't recommend that. I imagine everybody up on the council believes that corruption's wrong, right? Like, we all believe that we have no place for it here. Corruption will kill everything. It kills countries. It kills counties. It kills homes. We, we have to be more transparent. We have to, and, and especially elected officials. You guys have to sit there with a spotlight on you all day long. I have the same spotlight. Mine just is with money and the federal government. It's probably come out my head. I just want to know, I, I want to ask you guys a question. Are we against corruption? Like, we have no place for it? Because I can't honestly tell you I'd recommend anybody start anything in Avon Park. And it's, it's just one thing, right? Or, or maybe it's more that we don't know about. But just the, the light that's on this right now is going to set Avon Park back years. And as long, and I just want, I just want everybody on record, you guys, we don't, we don't agree with corruption, right? That's like bad.
Yep.
That's all I got. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Ryan Hartwig, Battle of the Bands Incorporated, June 2015, Avon Park. Um, also, see, I just got a little bit of a promotion here at Highlands County Veterans Council this past January. I'm sorry. Uh, I, I very, I have a very, very small question just to ask, but I want to first commend you. You had a great report. I read all 73 pages. I couldn't put it down. The last person who spoke was correct. We can't have this light on Avon Park the way it is. In fact, Battle of the Bands has really very much stepped back since some of this started came, coming out. We want to run events. We want to do that type of stuff. But the light that's on this town right now is not good. So I'm going to ask one question. I just want to go down the row. Are you, Brittany, intending to run again for office?
Comment on that tonight.
Shelley?
If I need to, yes.
Yes, I'd be willing to.
Mayor Anderson?
I believe so.
Jim Bernard? Ms. Taylor?
I got three more years and I only got four more after that. If my constituents will help me, I'm going to be right here.
Okay. Okay. If I could make one suggestion here. Mr. Anderson, you and your sister on the same board is a mistake. I think that either of you are going to stay on this board. I think you need to choose one, and we need to split up this vote a little bit. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Nancy Fisk, 603 South Hart Avenue, Avon Park. I would just like to ask the council, if you feel that this report stuck to the original RFP, it seemed to me that it was just to look into the actual sale of the Brickell Building, and possibly the development of it as the leases or as businesses moved in. That could be part of it. But it seems that it went, this investigation went way beyond that scope. And my concern is, there were at least three of the charges where the statement was made by the attorneys that there was no evidence of wrongdoing, but they thought that evidence had to be somewhere. What an irresponsible statement to make, that it's supposed to be a lawful document. If they can't find evidence, and they had 4,000 documents to look at, and they couldn't find evidence, they're still going to say there was no evidence, but we think it must be there somewhere. I think that's terrible. It seems to me that what began as an investigation into the sale has turned into a witch hunt, and I think that's very sad. And the citizens of Avon Park did not feel that it was inappropriate to have the mayor and his sister on the board. They've been re-elected twice, and so it's up to the citizens of Avon Park to make that decision, not one person. So I hope that you both will run again. I'm pleased with the work that you've done, and I think that this investigation, as far as I'm concerned, after some of those statements that were made in there, I don't find this investigation very credible.
And you have real estate experience also?
Excuse me?
You have real estate experience also? Because I don't...
Hold on one second before we make any more comments. Please put the microphone on.
Okay, so in order to restore your integrity with the slam that you just got, would you like to comment on that in all your years of experience? Because I know that once you find, it's a trickle-down. You start finding, and it just, I know it trickles down, but would you like to explain that?
Yeah, I'll absolutely respond to. I think the comment was, there was one allegation that we found unsubstantiated, and that was as to whether the Brickell Building RFP was properly bid. And that means that as far as the RFP went out, was there, you know, we looked into whether there was fraud, whether that was done correctly, and in that one piece, we found that there was no fraud. That does not negate the findings and recommendations, because we did find irregularities and other things that we looked into. But no, we found no, another thing that we looked into was, we had allegations that bids were being opened before the timing was over, that before the due date, people were opening the bids and sharing the information that was in those bids with members of city councils so that they and their families could then go and underbid and win the RFPs. I found no evidence of that. That doesn't mean no evidence exists, but I clearly, you know, unsubstantiated that in our report.
I just want to add one little comment. The other piece is that the findings that we did do, according to Florida law, the standard I had mentioned before is, I looked at preponderance of the evidence. Is it more likely than not that something happened? That's a civil litigation standard that is in all cases. Could be the quiet title thing, could be all the other facts. Criminal is beyond a reasonable doubt, as you know on TV, right? You know, is there probable cause, and then beyond a reasonable doubt. We looked at all of that to make our determinations, and some things just didn't rise to certain levels. The note about witch hunts and this and that, again, I don't know anybody here. We weren't witch hunting anything. We were given a case, given a mission, as I would say in the Army, and we executed the mission. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Pancetta Taylor. I live at 113 East Winthrop Street. And for the city councilmen and women, the one question that I have that your attorneys said earlier is this. If there wasn't any corruption in regarding to acquiring a Brickell Building, why is the mortgage and the lease information that they stated earlier is not clear as to who owns it and who has it? I think the attorney mentioned something about the night shadow or something like that in regard to the mortgage, like who actually owns it and how you can find that out?
Quiet title.
Yeah, the white title. Why is it...
Quiet.
Quiet.
Quiet title.
Why is that a complicated situation in order for you to know who owns the mortgage or in regards to whomever leased it or sold it to Mr. Salz?
Ms. Taylor, are you asking how the quiet title works? Is that how you're asking? You're asking if it, how it works?
I kind of understand how it works. I'm just not understanding or comprehending why that information is not, like, why is it so hidden? It seems like somebody hid their face in regards to acquiring the Brickell Building, getting a mortgage for, or when the city allowed them to lease it or allowed them to buy it for what the public says was a dollar?
It was $10.
Or $10? Why is that information so hidden? Like, why you not know who holds the title or who holds the mortgage of the Brickell Building? If that makes sense.
If you'd like, you can elaborate on that.
Yeah. Yeah. So, thank you, ma'am, for your question. One of the, again, I want to just go back to just the title. So again, there was a lease, the city gave a lease to a developer. Certain conditions, we've heard about all day today, about certain conditions had to be made in order for the city to then transfer that property, the person who got the lease, to the developer, so they would own it. There were, facially, it means that you can like just look at, if you have a real estate eye, you could see that there were problems with that deed, just on its face. A lot of times municipalities that do de-transfers, sometimes they have a lot of legal review, sometimes they don't. But bottom line is, there was a transfer of title. That transfer, there are allegations that it was on its face wrong. It was just defective. It's like me giving you the keys to my car, but I don't own the car. Okay?
Correct. So I stand corrected when I say it appears that they hid their face, where they're not wanting to tell the truth in regards to how they came and acquired the Brickell Building in regards to your, you all's investigation.
I would offer that the developer, again, who, I don't want to do the hiding of the face, I just want to say just on the legal issue, right? So we know who the developer is. We have the lease. There were certain things that were supposed to happen in that lease in order for that person who had the lease to get a deed. There were some things that just did not happen. Okay, that's the first thing. And then the second piece is, even if they did happen, the deed itself, if you just looked at the deed, it would be almost like Mickey Mouse signed it, because it was wrong. It just, it's wrong. There were things that just were facially wrong with that. And so in Florida, the term that we use when you go to the courthouse, could be the 10th Judicial Circuit, could be whatever circuit, 3rd, whatever, is you can ask a court, a judge, to quiet title, to fix it. Say, hey, Judge, this is wrong. Like, Mickey Mouse wrote this lease, this deed, it's just wrong. It's called a quiet title action. But the second problem was, is after the transfer happened, that developer then got a mortgage. They relied on this defective deed to get a mortgage. And then the question becomes, well, what do you do with the mortgage? And then, as we've heard here, there's business owners that have leases that also rely on that deed too. So you've got to kind of peel back that onion, but the bottom line up front is, is that a quiet title action is how we fix title in Florida. That's the name of the term we use, ma'am.
And if I could just elaborate on that? So, because I think what you're saying is, why is it not clear? Why can't you look at the deed and just see who owns it? Is that what your question is?
Yeah.
Right? Because when you look at the deed, it says that Daniel Salz owns it. It's clear as day, right? That's what it says, and he is the purported owner, which means, you know, we think he's the owner. The question is, is was that deed done properly? That's what Attorney Gilchrist was saying. Was, were all of, were all the laws followed when you executed this deed? And what we're saying in our legal review is that there is a basis to say no. So you have to go before a judge, and a judge has to make that decision. And a judge might say, yes, I mean, we're not the judges, right? And the, you know, there's no certainty here. That's the reality of the legal system. But there is a basis to challenge it, and that's what we're saying. That's what, and the way you challenge it is a quiet title. And if you think about it, it's like, hey, we're all arguing about this, so just quiet, and we're going to say who owns it. Right? Does that answer your question, hopefully?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Ma'am? Yep, I appreciate that.
Michelle Cunningham, 5 East Pleasant.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Anderson?
Yes, ma'am.
I only have one question.
Okay.
Why did you not disclose your financial interest in the Brickell Building?
I don't have a financial interest in the Brickell Building.
There is evidence that there, that you have.
There's no evidence of that that I've seen.
Have you not looked at the report?
They told you that they have no direct evidence.
Have you not looked at the report with your own, with your own email?
I've looked at the report. I see no evidence. They couldn't provide me with any evidence either.
Any other questions? Name and address for the record, please.
Emilio Garabaldi, 126 West Main. Everybody can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As crazy as it is, okay, myself and Ms. Piper were experts in real estate, not law, not anything else, okay? And I've always wondered this. Of all these years and everything that we've been doing, we're arguing over a building that belongs to a ghost. Daniel Salz has never been here once, ever. If I own any building, any property, you can shake your head all you want, if I own any building, any property, and someone is accusing me of fraud, I would be there directly, and he's never been here. Whatever your, whatever your relationship with him is, I don't know. I can't say. But I'm curious, and I'm going to ask you this, Mr. Mayor. Say, they find fraud, or whatever the case may be, and Daniel Salz is held liable. Your wife, yourself, whoever in your family put money into this building, are you going to go after Daniel Salz for your money? I didn't think you would answer. So what happens is, when a building goes to CO, and for a piece of the building, whatever, 20,000 square feet and 5,000 of it goes there, in what city do they sign away the deed without filling all the benchmarks which were taken away? 101 West Main, like Ms. Piper was saying, has an incredible amount of benchmarks, but the Brickell Building wasn't. Every RFP that comes through here, it's always different. Why is it not the same? That is why they asked us to interview for the people in the crowd who were saying that there's no point to talk to myself or Sarah. It shows a pattern. There's constantly a pattern in this city, and we're trying to get to the bottom of the pattern. So it does matter. Each RFP, each council meeting, each piece of property that goes through the city has to be scrutinized, and the Brickell Building wasn't. That's why we're here today. So once again, if you are not involved with Daniel Salz, or whatever the case may be, every dime that you spent, that doesn't matter to you or your family? I didn't think you would answer that either. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Dutcher. Everybody's going to hear that.
There we go.
I just come down to say, I think it's, this county, this city has held you guys, you guys are supposed to be higher, better, and lead by example. You cannot tell me that this deal happened and that the people was unaware of it. Come on. You don't buy a building and don't know that it's going, you're going to make a bunch of money on it. Don't tell me that that's the case. It's not the case. What it is, it's corrupt, and I think that you guys are supposed to be, we kind of look at you like leaders, and I think it's a disappointment for this county and this city. I've had a restaurant in this town 18 years, and I love this city, and I love, and I know just about every person in this town. That's all I wanted to say.
I was actually getting up to leave.
We don't believe that.
My name is Don Elwell, 2832 Dwayne Palmer Boulevard, Spring Lake, nowhere near downtown Avon Park. You folks represent the city of Avon Park and the citizens of Avon Park. In one of my roles, I do the exact same thing. I represent the people in the city of Avon Park. And in case y'all hadn't noticed, they are about as divided as they can be right now with what's going on. Social media is a wonderful, horrible thing, and it is indeed not helping to split up this town. I encourage you not to go one way or the other, but to go in a direction, to leave here tonight with a direction. Maybe to take one of the recommendations that's been given to you and say, okay, let's go this direction, and we'll find out if there's an investigation that comes about and what the outcome is, we will live with that. Or it could be a recall election, or it could be, it could be whatever. But to go in a direction to begin the healing, because right now, the city of Avon Park needs to close this chapter and get back to being its charming self that it used to be. So I would recommend that you at least come out of this with a direction, and then let the facts play themselves out, let everything else play itself out, not take one side, but then let's move forward as a city united together again.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Elwell, I thought you were going to bring some pizza. I thought you were bringing pizza.
If that would help, I would bring it.
Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Kamla Long, 2486 South Lake Letter Drive, Avon Park. This investigation appears to be one-sided and deeply concerning. It is unsettling that the focus seems to have shifted from the original purpose of the RFP posted on the Brickell Building to questioning the character of the mayor. Attorney Gilchrist's approach seems more intent on raising issues of trust in the mayor than addressing taxpayers that they have spent over $84,000 to determine whether the Brickell Building's documentation was properly handled. One must ask, why did... One must ask, why didn't the city or the CRA funds invest their dollars into revitalizing the Brickell Building when they had ownership? Again, that is a rhetorical question. I don't need an answer. Has the city ever invested over $700,000 for historical preservation of economic development for one building? I will answer that. No. So why now? After more than two and a half years of dedicated effort to preserve a key piece of historic downtown, just as new businesses are investing their life savings to elevate Avon Park, why did this investigation emerge now? This investigation, as presented, appears to be conducted with bias culminating in recommendations rooted not in evidence, but in conjecture. $84,000 for plenty of baseless recommendations, not hard evidence. In short, this investigation is a farce, and it appears to fail the test of fairness and fiscal responsibility and transparency, the very thing that Gilchrist purports. Bankrupting the city, just as the momentum of business is at an all-time high, seems like economic suicide. I beseech this council to think long and hard on the choices today. I ask you, what was the damage to the Brickell Building prior to this investigation? It was in despair, disrepair, leaking roof, fat-infested. If the city wanted to make it a million-dollar building, they could have, but they didn't. This has been investigated many times already. The additional cost of the investigation was an optional cost. They decided to take it on due to not being satisfied with the other investigations from the county attorney, as well as the governor's very own ethics committee. At what point is enough enough? Our county is moving forward and on an international stage. With the growth we are seeing, this is misuse of funds, and it is detrimental to our growth. This overshadows the celebration of these businesses moving in. It is a dark cloud. You, the council, you have a choice. Stop this nonsense and move our city forward. This is a setback. Whether you wish it, you hope it, or you dream it, this is just my personal opinion and my input. And I will say that the RFP on 101 WS Main Street with Emilio Garibaldi was illegally created. It was a foundation he created on behalf of Rotary International and registered on SunBiz using the City Lot 101 West Main Street address, which was not his address. It took one year to dissolve that on the insistence of the local Rotary Club. So again, consider your source of information.
All right, keep your comments down out there. Name and address for the record, please.
Steven Madre, 10 East Main.
Keep your comments down, audience. Let the man speak.
Boy, being back here is pretty crazy. I started here a year and a half ago, trying to come out about everything. So with Kamla saying what she had to say was, it just took this long for someone to hear what had actually happened. And he can say whatever he wants to say about not being there and not funding it and all that stuff. You can go right ahead. I mean, I'll show you documents, whatever you want to see. Everybody has all my stuff. I talked to Gilchrist, he didn't talk to Gilchrist, so he can say what he wants, right? He's come up here, he's slandered me a ton of times. At this point, it's just kind of redundant, a lot of people coming up here and just kind of saying their thing about this, but they haven't been part of it since the beginning. What was I to gain to come out about all this, hurt my business, you know, people not want to try to come to my gym, you know? You know, when you get assaulted and things happen to you and, you know? I, I've heard so many people come up here and have an opinion about what happened, but not one of them was there on day one. Right? I came out and I showed people everything, and no one listened. And that's why it cost $84,000 to do an investigation, because no one would listen. The people that were open about things, shared, talked to Gilchrist, and honestly, Gilchrist didn't even come to me. I reached out to them. So it wasn't like they were going around trying to nitpick certain people, it was people that wanted to come forward. I came out and I talked about stuff. And yeah, I worked very close with Garrett. I thought things would be a lot different, and they weren't, which is kind of saddening, but, you know, and Danny, you know, was pretty much like my best friend, you know? So to, to see that happen was pretty hard. It just, a little disheartening because we did everything together, so I hate to see this happening, but people can come up here and say what they want to say and try to discredit Gilchrist and, and all that stuff, but from what I read, everything was pretty spot-on. Thank you. Sorry. Oh, I have to say.
Would you like to answer any questions? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Rob Bullock, 87 South Graham Road. The reason why I came up here.
Speak up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. One of the reasons why I came up here was because a couple of speakers ago, the question was, or the statement was made, the city has never invested in the buildings before, spent this kind of money into a building. Why was the Brickell Building? I can hear myself.
Speak as loud as you can.
Um, okay, so the question or the statement was made, the city hadn't spent money or invested in historical buildings, and why did this happen? Well, a little more than 10 years ago, I was on the CRA Advisory Board, and Maria Sutherland might remember this, I think you worked for the city at that time. And I remember going to the advisory board meeting, they were held during the day at that time, and as I stopped at the light at Main Street and Lake Avenue, there was a big sign for sale. And it had been up there for some time, the building, I mean, it's no secret, that building has been empty for some time. So during that advisory board meeting, I said, can the city purchase this building for an incubator program? We put stores on the bottom and apartments or condos up top, and kind of go back old school where business owners were, had their business underneath, and then they could live upstairs. It would work to bring new business to the city and residents. They'd eventually need to grow out of those storefronts, then they could, we could find a bigger, bigger building to go into, or they could build a bigger building in the city, they could go out and buy a house and increase revenue. Everybody liked that idea on our advisory board. Eventually made it to the mothership. I don't know if you were on the council back then. I can't remember. But that was the intention of the CRA making the purchase to buy the building, the city taking over it. And what I vaguely remember is, the city manager at the time then thought it would be a great idea to hand it over to the housing authority, which of course didn't pan out. And then we all kind of know over the years what happened to it, then it got storm damage, we changed city managers a few times, they would each try to bit by bit, take it. And then, of course, the news came that it sold through an RFP process, all this great thing's going to happen. Did good things come out of the Brickell Building being purchased? Yes, I'd say so. The, the gym has been amazing, it has brought, brought more people downtown to Main Street than we have seen in a very long time. I would, I would gather to say it has acted like an anchor to Main Street, attracting other businesses to want to come here. And as we see, we see citizens that have signed leases, for whatever reason, and sink hundreds of thousands of dollars of their own money into other portions of the Brickell Building now. Am I disappointed? Yeah. We can't go back, we can't change, we just got to figure out how to go through. But if anything, I hope me coming up here and explaining, not just to you, the, the current city council, but also to them back here, the citizens, why the city ended up with the Brickell Building. It was because we wanted to make a change. Now, to follow up with someone else said, I think it was Commissioner Elwell, said, we need to pick a direction and go with it. We can't let this stumble, we can't let it stop business and economic growth in the city. We just need to find that direction now and go forward, and go from here. But hopefully, you know, the vision of that building can continue, business can continue, and hopefully, economic growth in the city will continue. We'll, we'll get over this. There's been bad times in our city before, we just need to grow past this.
If you remember, there was a couple of committees that were formed after the incident with the housing authority failed, and there was a couple of committees that were, that were formed to try to decide what to do with that building. And I mean, pretty much everybody always kind of went back to that general outlook that you were talking about. But I sat through who knows how many of those meetings, and the biggest issue is that nobody could decide, to Elwell's point, on a direction. Nobody could pull the trigger on do it this way, do it that way. It was always push it off to another meeting, push it off to another meeting, and that went on for so long that eventually, there was a council that came along and said, we should do something with this building. This has gone on long enough, too much money's been spent on maintenance, hasn't been on the tax rolls, and I can't remember what year the city actually bought it, a long time.
Yeah, it's been four, 2014 or 15, I think.
Yeah, right. Just, does that seem accurate to you?
Yeah, it's about that timeframe, yeah.
Okay.
I, I appreciate you letting me come up and try to clear, clear that up. That was the original intent, was to put businesses in there. Unfortunately, this has all come about, but at least the business, businesses are in the building now, and we just need to figure this out and go forward.
Very good. Anyone else?
You know, in my opinion, I kind of still feel like we do that with the CRA.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, I kind of feel like we still do that with the CRA.
What, can't figure out a direction, or?
Kick the can down the road.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Angelica Potter Garibaldi, 126 West Main. Um, I wanted to ask Shelley, or maybe you can direct it to Mr. Gilchrist, because some people, I think, are confused about what the whole purpose of the RFP was. From my understanding, it was to go from start to finish. The sale, the process, was there wrongdoings and all that? Because some people are saying, you know, they're, they went out of their scope, or they did too much in their nitpicking things. Do you remember what the whole, the actual RFP was, or does Mr. Gilchrist, because he was awarded it? Because from what I understand, it was the whole process, start to finish kind of thing, not just the sale, not just one thing.
Perhaps Dr. Kelly, I believe you drafted the title, didn't you?
I'm looking it up.
Okay. We'll get the actual title here in a second.
Michelle, would you happen to have that on your?
I'm pulling it.
Okay.
Are we close, or should we take someone else? Anyone else have any, maybe?
Mayor, I have a question or two for the attorney, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, what's your name again?
My name is Michelle Weiner.
Ms. Weiner.
Mm-hmm.
Did your firm ever try to contact the original imposter investor?
Yes.
Mr. Donald Rice?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, were you successful in that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. My next question. Did your firm contact the Florida Ethics Commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Were you able to ask them if our mayor, Garrett Anderson, was under any type of active investigation in reference to the Brickell Building?
They refused to speak with me.
Is that normal?
You know, their response was they didn't have any firsthand knowledge about the Brickell Building itself, and so they didn't, they felt they didn't have anything to share with our investigation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So I have an answer for the scope of services and the objective of the original RFP. The purpose of this engagement is to provide investigative services as outside legal counsel to the city. These services are including, but not limited to, gathering evidence, interviewing witnesses, conducting legal research, and reporting on findings relating the occurrence of any violations of applicable ethics laws, local laws, city policy, and potential fraud in connection with the request for proposal process regarding the sale of the city's Brickell Building, the resulting contract and real estate transactions pertaining to the Brickell Building, permitting and permitting procedures related to the Brickell Building, the validity and applicability of any issued certificative occupancy pertaining to the city's Brickell Building matters as discussed during the city's council regular public meeting held on February 24th, 2025.
There you have it. All right, anyone else? One and done, I'm sorry. You've already asked one, I'm sorry. You've already spoken, ma'am. You've already spoken, you've had your time. Sorry. Name and address for the record, please.
Crystal Lane, 1845 North Zenith Road.
Yes, sir.
Avon Park. Anybody here lived here for 74 years? I could tell you everything that's happened to this town. This town used to be booming, incredibly booming, and it was disassembled by the city, you know, with permitting, national chains out on the highway, and, and banks and all kinds of things that destroyed the downtown in Avon Park. And you can't even believe what a jewel this city was. This is a case of incredibly bad leadership, and it's been going on for a long time. Let's have a look at Lake Verona. You think that doesn't relate to what we're talking about? The north side of that lake is ruined by an illegal series of impacts to the lake involving that incredibly hideous seawall. And, and you know, Lake Verona is a very famous lake, it's one of the most important lakes in Florida. It's over 80 feet deep, it's the deepest, one of the deepest sinkhole lakes in Peninsular Florida. But, you know, and anybody can come up here and say anything they want to say. It's called the First Amendment, content neutral provision. Say anything they want to say. What I would like to say here is that I think the investigation is too narrow. I think it needs to be expanded a lot, because there's a lot that relates to this that hasn't been introduced. And I'm hoping that the analysis continues and that more information is welcomed, because I think this is going to expand into something really big, there's so much out there that's taken place that hasn't been addressed. And it all relates, because it relates to the condition of our community, the, the culture that we have, the civility of the town, and certainly the, the prosperity of the city. And, you know, it's a virtual ghost town, there are a few businesses that operate here, but it, it was once so much more, and that's what we have to face. I do agree with one of the speakers as far as the amount of money that's been spent in various investigations. I mean, you take that money and put it into one of these buildings and make it a viable operation. But nevertheless, I think your presentation was well-done, and I, I appreciate that. And I did have one other question, that is, where do you hail from? Where is your office located?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. So our office is in Coral Gables, Florida, sir?
Yes, it's, you're driving up here.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir. Sometimes flying, too, sir. Sometimes flying, too, sir.
Well, that's about it, I really don't have too much of a dog in this fight, other than, you know, the general issue of the condition of the community and the direction it's taken over the years. And I think I have a better perspective on that than just about anyone, and I could provide a lot more detail if need be. Thank you.
Anyone else? Name and address for the record, please.
Beverly Ruck, 6300 East Arbuckle Road, Avon Park. Okay, so the attorneys have stated that the records are in excess of 4,000 pages, and clearly, this record is a condensed version of that. Are there other records with additional compelling information that is relevant with additional scrutiny?
So I just want to clarify, the question is, are there records that we didn't review that we would have liked to have had?
No, is there more records within that 4,000?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
Please keep the comments down in the audience, but is there more of the 4,000 documents that should have been included in this?
Yeah, that there are more things that have come out.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how to answer that.
Yeah, so the 4,000 records, which again, we're going to give to the council, be on a thumb drive, those are all the records that we got from various individuals here, public records, dah dah. The thing is, is that we weren't able to get certain private party records, i.e. emails. You've heard about them, financial records, someone sent a telephone bill in this meeting. Those require subpoenas, I mean, that's in part why lawsuits are important. So those type of records will... I'm sorry. We actually want spaghetti, too. But ma'am, with regards to those records, we just don't have, respectfully. But there are no additional records that we have seen that we're not going to hand over. Everything we've gotten, we're handing it over, ma'am.
And everything that we received, we reviewed, so, yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir.
Sid Fernandez, 225 Tulane Center. So I'm one of the newer Avon Parkians, is that what they call it?
Sure.
It's been 21 months that I've been here, guys. I've owned a home here since 2021, moved here in 2023 to give my family a different style of life. You know, we're from the city originally, from Miami. You're wearing a Gators-looking thing, I won't judge you for that. Let's be frank, everything is a recommendation. I agree, there's a lot left on the table to prove what actually did or did not happen. There seems to be smoke, and usually when there's smoke, there's fire, but that doesn't make anyone here guilty, okay? But I'm going to speak to someone who came into a town and said, "Man, there's so much potential. Why isn't greatness finding this city?" I spoke to three different people who have lived in this town for 40-plus years, and they always revert back to, "Anyone that brings good to this town will find a way out." So where is that coming from? There seems to be a leadership issue. I don't know who it is between God and whoever's doing wrong. There's leaders that get voted onto this, and I feel for each and every one of you. You guys get put under a microscope, but the second that you put your name on a ballot, you kind of warrant that. We need transparency across the board. So whatever comes out of this, I think, was it that gentleman that spoke very eloquently? I believe he's Commissioner, Elwell, was that his name?
Elwell.
Elwell, thank you. I think he summed it up pretty amazingly. We need to figure out what the, what is going to be our priorities moving forward, guys. And we need leaders right now, and we've needed it for some time. As someone who wants to raise their little girl in this town until she decides to leave, we need leadership. That doesn't mean one, that doesn't mean two, that means everyone across the board. Because that's what we're feening for, and the longer and longer we get to a response or an answer of clarity as to what the future holds for Avon Park, the rumblings are only getting louder. I think what Kamala was saying, there's validity to it. That's a lot of money to figure out inefficiencies, issues with title work, issues with how to sign, how to notarize. These are things that should be taught at a very basic level of our leaders. That doesn't make you guys fraudulent, just we didn't dot our i's and cross our t's. You made a great point, Mayor. What did that building actually, what was the value to this city if there was nothing in it? I think saying today it's a much more valuable piece of property than it was when it was purchased, completely agree with you. But if we're going to use that to cover up something that may have happened, it's a bad precedent to set, not to say that the people and those wonderful constituents who are putting their own money into it should be penalized for that, no. I think there's a way of solving the issue, but there needs to be some deeply, deeply rooted changes to what our leaders are putting out. And again, there's a couple of rookies here still learning the ropes, but we really, really need to figure this out, guys. Because there's a lot of goodness right here, and I'm not going to put, again, I put no guilt on anybody. Things look bad, but we really need to figure this out, because this constant battle and bickering between everyone gets us to nowhere. And the more we become Jerry, Jerry, people like Mr. Dean won't show back up and bring their business here. So I ask you guys, whether you're guilty or not, be leaders, because this is the moment. Stop the inefficiencies of needing to bring someone else from some other town to fix what's going on here. This is very simple, be honest, take accountability, and let's fix the issues at its core. There is a rot happening, and we just, we just need to take accountability. So I ask each and every one of you, whether you're on this side or on this side, it does not matter. This is Avon Park, and though it's only been home for less than two years, it's going to be home for a long time. And for everyone behind me, that involves you, too. Because we're the ones who put our names on a ballot and to put and vote those people in. So if you want to scream to the high heavens about what's going on wrong, start checking with yourselves first. Because it starts with us to be educated on who we put in power. So make sure we're looking in the mirrors before we start turning the mirror on everybody else. Thank you guys so much.
Before you go.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a suggested route to get to that conclusion?
Sir, I think just getting into, getting into an office with some pizza, maybe a stiff drink, and just having a conversation. I've seen a lot of y'all's meetings, and again, there's a lot of contention already. Again, I have no clue, I've never been in politics, guys. I've been in the service, spent 10 years in the service, led people, led overseas, led in flight. I can never, ever think that I can be in your shoes and handle the life that each and every one of you guys had to go through. I get it. I only feel bad to a certain extent, once you put your name in that ballot, that's it. You guys need to sit down in a room and just discuss it. There's too many meetings where there's just this cross banter constantly. The lack of decorum just gets to a point, like, we need to stop. Let's talk it out, peeps. We all have got, most of the majority here are parents, everyone here a parent? Guys, it's just simple, have a conversation, but it takes the true transparency and an honest conversation, and people just not looking with a side eye to get to the next step. And that starts with you guys, each and every one of y'all. And for us back here, if we want something different, we need to be different. We do, this city deserves better. And you guys have the opportunity to do that, so thank you guys again.
Appreciate that. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Okay. All right, I don't see any more speakers. So now we come to moving forward, direction that we want to take. Is there any suggestions tonight, or shall we reconvene?
Did we, we did declare this a special meeting where we can vote, right? Or make motions?
We did.
Okay, oh, sorry.
Given the allegations, I'll obviously have questions of the city attorney and/or the ethics board of what I can and cannot take part in a vote on. So depending on how a motion is, I'll have to ask that question.
I do have one more question for legal counsel. I'm not talking yet, hold on.
She's talking to herself right now?
So, on your questions, your findings questions, on number 10, allegation 10, did the Highlands County Building Department act properly in the issuance of the required permit and certificate? And although you did say no, you didn't find any substantiated evidence, would you explain your last line that says, "Given the incestuous nature of the violations, it is not disposive that the county found no evidence of wrongdoing within their own department"? Can you just elaborate on that?
Yes, ma'am. It is concerning to us the, that Mr. Salz, who's the owner of the Brickell Building, his wife is the head of the county building department. That in and of itself, like we said in the report, is not a dispositive fact, meaning that that fact alone doesn't make or break a determination, but it was enough to raise our eyebrows that, let's make sure that everything was done properly. Then when we went to go do our due diligence to see if everything was done properly, we noted a number of issues in the permitting process, as well as in the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. So again, again, the evidence shows that the inspections were not conducted in a timely manner, and there were issues with the issuance of the CO and that incestuous nature. And by that, I mean, the wife of the building owner being the head of the department that makes the determination as to whether the permits are issued is concerning. And then when the county came in and did their own investigation and found no evidence of wrongdoing, we found that that was not dispositive because of, because of that potential conflict.
Okay.
I believe the county stated that Ms. Salz has no direct leadership over Mr. Longshore, is that correct?
I believe that is what the county said, and we have questions about the credibility of that investigation. Because a building investigating its own, a department investigating its own actions is never going to be as impartial as an outsider in doing that same investigation.
Okay, thank you.
I would also like to just make a comment in hearing the concerns of the citizens about a path forward and the concerns of the leaseholders in the Brickell Building. And I just want to make a point that if the city does decide to pursue a quiet title action, and if a judge comes in and says that this deed was done erroneously, that doesn't mean that a new lease could not be entered into between Mr. Salz and the city to, you know, extend the previous lease that was done with maybe some of the protections that had been previously discussed. So I just wanted to point that, point that out as a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, do we want to think about it and bring it back to another meeting, or what? We're not going to have comments from the audience.
I'd like to ask a question to, if I may, Mayor, to you and Council Maguire. Before, if a vote is taken here tonight, are y'all willing to pay back the fees owed to the attorney, any second mortgages, any liens on the building, resign from your position and not run again before a vote is taken tonight?
Are you not answering on purpose?
Not answering. Thought you said we can have a discussion here.
Obviously not.
Ms. Maguire?
We don't have to answer this question.
Right, you don't, I just wanted to see if you wanted to entertain it before vote is only, before anything is voted tonight.
I don't think that takes anything forward.
Okay, so according to the Florida statute 112.51 that reads, "Suspension and removal of municipal officers. The governor may suspend any elected or appointed municipal official for reasons such as malfeasance, negligence of duty, or habitual drunkenness," which doesn't really apply here. "If a municipal official is arrested..." I'm sorry, I'm repeating all this that you had said. For municipal, for arrested for a felony related to their duties, the governor has the authority to suspend them. The suspension creates a temporary vacancy which can be filled by temporary appointment. During a suspension, officials cannot perform duties, receive pay, or be entitled to office privileges. Therefore, I'd like to make the motion for Dr. Kelly to move forward with the information found in this investigation to the governor of Florida, referencing Florida statute 112.51 to have Mayor Garrett Anderson and councilperson Brittany Maguire's seat suspended from the office due to malfeasance and/or misfeasance and abuse of power.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Jerry, do you have any comments about the motion and how it relates to myself voting on this?
I think you have to, who on the council you already have with regard to the ethics aspects of it? Yeah, I'm not familiar with all the facts associated with this. I mean, obviously, they have, you know, a side of the facts, you didn't provide your side, which is your right to do. So I don't know what, you know, the situation is, I don't want to pine on the ethics associated with it, but you should rely on what your attorney has said, or, you know, the Ethics Commission with regard to that. I will say, though, I mean, with regard to the motion, as clearly, the council wants to do something, or some of the council want to do something. If you send this to the governor's office, what's going to happen is they're going to look at it and say, "Okay, well, we've got one side, we need an investigation." I don't know that they do investigations, but maybe they'll refer to somebody else to do investigations. But they're not going to simply say, take the report and say, "Oh, we're going to remove him from office for that."
We're not asking them to be removed, we're asking the seats to be suspended until we can move forward.
Yeah, I, well, I'll let them make that decision, but I'm just simply saying, since it is one side, and I'm not criticizing the report, because you got what you only think you could get from the evidence that was allowed to you. I don't know that the governor's going to take any action on that, but if he does, okay.
Yeah, so obviously, you know, given the fact that we received the report on Friday, and we're having this meeting tonight, and now we have the motion that was, you know, constructed here tonight. Obviously, I haven't had enough time to ask the Commission on Ethics, and there's plenty of allegations that there was an issue between me and the Commission on Ethics. So it would be unwise for me not to seek their opinion before voting on this, and I have not had an opportunity to do that. So I would suggest that we postpone this decision until I've had time to ask them.
We've already got a motion and a second.
Yep. Okay, well, we're not going to have the comments from the audience, guys, unless you're speaking in the microphone, as we've done this entire night.
Mr. Jerry, I have a question for you. I'm a little confused, and maybe you can clear this up for me. We was coming to a special meeting tonight in reference to the investigation of if there was any wrongdoing was done in regards to the Brickell Building. Did you not know that it was possible that we were going to be voting tonight? And if it was a possibility, shouldn't that information should have been already checked into? Should you have made phone calls to find out, you know? Should you have made phone calls to find out if the mayor and Brittany could vote tonight?
No, that's their own ethics, and they have counsel associated with that, and they have facts that I'm sure that they want to keep to themselves or use with their counsel. And I don't have those facts, I don't have all the facts associated with it. That's why I referred him in the first place to an attorney that specializes in ethics. Shooting from the hip, you want me to shoot from the hip here based on what was in the report? In spite of all the rumps and the pearl clutching from the audience, that, it's not something I can do.
So, Mr. Jerry, answer this question for me. So, Mr. Jerry, answer this question for me. This is about the Brickell Building, okay? And it is, wouldn't it be a conflict of interest if they voted on it? Because it is about them and the wrongdoing that they have possibly done. So wouldn't it be a conflict of interest if they voted?
It could be based on what the report says, you know, it seems to me, but if they're not sure, then they're going to have to, at that point, abstain anyway, which they're allowed to do under the Florida statutes.
I think we need to call roll.
Okay, any other comments?
So, Mr. Burr, we abstain because we have not been able to seek counsel? What's the abstain, what's the reason?
That your vote on this would be a violation of ethics, but it would appear that since you all read in the report, you know, there is an appearance certainly that there's an ethics issue. So that's the issue I have with it, is that there is something in there, and they're basically claiming that you all have done something wrong. So that they're going to try and take action on that now, it would appear to be an ethical conflict because it would inure to your pecuniary interests. So, but if you're not sure, you know, then you should abstain.
But is that, so we're unsure, we abstain, or I abstain because I'm unsure of the...
Well, that's up to you. But if you should, you need to state the reason why you're going to abstain as part of it, and then you have to fill out Form 8B, and explain the reason for abstention, which would be the possible conflict due to what's in the report.
Okay.
Jerry, can we potentially make a motion, a supplemental motion, to postpone this until we've had time to seek counsel? I'm sorry, crowd, you cannot do that. You can make comments in the microphone, you've had your chance, I'm sorry. Would it be possible to make a supplemental motion that we could postpone this until we've had time to seek counsel about the vote?
I don't want to go too far in this because Ellie Nyberg is representing the city with regard to the process here, and she is on the line still, I think, maybe? Yes, there she is.
Hi, good evening, hi. I would, if you have retained independent counsel for this, I would say the same second things as Mr. Gare. This is a question you need to get him out, and if that's, if that's something you had an opportunity to speak to, I don't think that there's a problem with seeking. I can't give you guys advice if I spell that personally. If you have independent counsel, that's my role later.
Okay. Understood. All right, any other questions, comments? Going once, going twice? All right. With that, we'll call the roll.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For Attorney, Mr. Gilchrist?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I will. My question is this, sending this directly to the governor's office, wouldn't he, if he decides to do anything about it, wouldn't he just directly send it to the federal investigation into the Haci department, which is something that we talked about previously, that they would do the investigation? If he's going to look at it, he won't do it himself. So why would we just refer it directly to them?
Sir, that's a little bit outside the scope of this piece of the puzzle, of our investigation. But in the past, if you want to ask me about in the past what I've seen before, is I've seen a lot of different things. So, yes, I've seen them send to EPLI, I think that's what you were referring to previously. I've seen them look at other, the ethics investigation that I looked at. I've seen them look at independent counsel, like us. I've seen them look at a whole bunch of different things before they make a determination. So it's not a one-size-fits-all, but I believe the motion that's on the floor was about suspension, not actually terminating, removing office, which is the statute that we had cited earlier, sir.
Okay, so you don't think you'd get the same results by going directly to them?
The same result of suspending or removal, sir?
Either one.
Suspending is different than removal, and removal, the statute's pretty specific, and we had cited in our report about either you have a conviction, there's a may versus a must piece of the puzzle. But a suspension is very different, pending the determination from the council to do something, sir. It's a, to my point is, it's an easier decision to make for a suspension versus removal, because removal is permanent, sir.
All right, thank you.
If I may ask the council, do you need us anymore? Respectfully, you know, this is to, again, assure the sunshine law, which is one of the things we talked about. But our investigative report, I believe, is done. We did our presentation, but do you need us anymore? Because it seems to be information between, respectfully, the public and you guys.
Oh, you're in for it now, you gotta stay the whole night. Just kidding.
Yeah, we would like for you to stay.
That was the request, if you need us to stay or not.
I think we'll be done here in just a few minutes.
That was the only question I had.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Maguire?
I'll abstain due to my name being in the report for a possible interfering, I'm not, Jerry, what was the word again?
Allegations, possible allegations against you in the report.
Okay, due to possible allegations in the report concerning me.
Okay.
Councilmember Mercur?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
I'll abstain as the, my name is named in the investigation report.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Let's take a moving forward, yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two, or five to zero, sorry.
No.
Three to zero.
With two abstaining.
Two abstain.
There you go. All right, anything else for this meeting?
I do have something else. Dr. Kelly, do you remember when you had in the budget that you were looking to have outs, sorry, sorry? Do you remember during budget time that you had an outside, that you sought to get outside building department services?
Yes, I had put $100,000 in for expenses and a wash on the income side as a placeholder.
Okay, so something like that would have to be RFP, done through RFP, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, in light of the findings presented in this investigation regarding the Highlands County Building Department, I motion that Dr. Kelly proceed with contracting an outside building department as proposed in the weeks in review and previously proposed in the budget hearings.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Shelley. Can you motion it again?
The motion is to have Dr. Kelly proceed with contracting outside building department services like she did at the budget hearings.
I second it.
We have a motion in a second, any questions?
My question for Jerry, if that was not on the special meeting as an agenda item, and can that even be discussed or a motion made on that?
So, I generally ask people not to go beyond the scope of what's on the agenda specifically, but I think this really falls within that same framework of what's being discussed, and so I don't think it's too far afield from a topic that was on the advertisement.
But we, I wouldn't have to abstain from that vote, though, since this is the building department.
I don't know how that, how the hiring of the building, outside building department would affect you in a pecuniary proprietary way.
Okay.
But I'll leave that to you evaluate.
Any other questions? Obviously, the council's already been over this issue at somewhat recent previous meeting. I disagree with the notion, I disagree with the notion, I think it would be unwise to do it this time. So, is there any other questions or comments?
Does this fire a building department to help you make, do things like evaluate buildings when they're, you know, before they get a CO and things like that? Is that what this for? It's not related to this particular?
It's not specific to this investigation.
Okay, all right.
But it would be an RFP and not to just directly contract.
As you understand the motion, the motion is to have our, to stop using the county and to hire our own building department, is that correct?
That would have to go through an RFP process, and then any potential contract would come back to the board for consideration.
But that was the motion, correct?
Right, to go out to RFP.
Right, okay.
Wouldn't that have to be discussed on an agenda, like what we would require, what we would pay, and so on and so forth, to move forward?
So, any results, any bids that came in from an RFP would be brought back to council for consideration at a later date.
So what would you require on the RFP? I mean, you're going to put a salary, you're going to put them out, you're going to, what qualifications, are we going to discuss that first, or are you just going to do it?
Well, that would be all part of how we bid out the RFP.
Which should be on an agenda item, correct?
Well, that's what Attorney Burr was just answering for Councilmember Maguire.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Maguire?
No.
Councilmember Mercur?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
No.
Vice Mayor Bernard?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Motion fails, three to two.
All right, is there anything else for the good of the meeting?
Yes, I'm not done yet.
All right, well, if you get outside the scope, all you're doing is just making confusion.
I'm not outside the scope. So, due to the allegations of a few council members, I feel it necessary to create a code of conduct handbook for any current council member and future council members that will include a code of ethics, training, and instruction of council members' roles and responsibilities.
Based off of?
Based off of the findings in this report. That's also a motion to instruct Dr. Kelly to, I'm sorry, I wasn't more clear, make the motion to instruct you to create a code of conduct handbook for any of the council members and future council members that will include code of ethics, training, and instruction of council members' roles and responsibilities.
Okay, is it a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
My question for Ms. Mercur is, what is that going to be based on? The code? Is it a specific organization, or what is she looking for to put in that code?
Ethics, code of ethics, training, instruction of council members' our roles and responsibilities to the public. Did you not understand that? I mean, I don't know if that's a clear quest, answer or not.
I guess mine was based on, is it on the Florida Commission of Ethics? Is it based on sunshine law? Where is she going to be as far as the author of this document?
Dr. Kelly, do you know if other cities have done this? And do you know if you could maybe get like some sort of a rubric you could follow, or an example if you could follow of other cities?
I know other cities definitely have ordinances that define their code of ethics. I don't know specifically about a code of conduct handbook, but I could research that.
Okay.
Dr. Kelly, is this something that you've discussed with Mercur before the meeting?
Yes, it is, I asked her. I surely did, I asked her myself, is that something that's possible? And she said she'd research it.
Fantastic, so you've had some time to research it. So in your research...
No, she didn't, I just asked her earlier.
I said before the meeting is what I was getting at.
This morning, yes.
Yeah, I Googled code of ethics for other cities.
So you haven't had time to look into it?
Right, right.
Got it, okay. All right, so you're going to come up with some suggestions, and we'll talk about it at a future meeting? Is that your...
If that's the direction I'm given, yes.
Sure, okay. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, is there any further comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Maguire?
Yes.
Councilmember Mercur?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else for the good of the city?
I have some more stuff.
Okay, you know, a simple suggestion to bring up something at a future meeting is sufficient.
We're good. So I don't know how the rest of the council members feel about moving forward, because I think that's something that has been missed right now. We need to talk about how we want to move forward. I don't know if that needs to be, I don't know how to approach that, so any help from anybody would be appreciated.
Adjourn and have a meeting in the future, that's usually how we...
No, because that's kicking the can down the road.
No, it's not.
We need to settle with this. We have till nine o'clock.
It's not kicking the can, people.
So, because personally, I'd kind of like to see the quiet title be done to get our building back. I'd also, wouldn't mind moving forward with the recommendations from the Gilchrist Firm listed in this report.
All of them?
All of them.
So your direction's to go everywhere?
Yes, yes. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, so if we could open that up for discussion, that'd be great. I'm sorry, I'd like to know how the rest of the council feels about moving forward with the findings. I think that needs to be discussion between all of us.
Well, it's been looked at by the administration at the time, it's been looked at by the county, it's been looked at by the state Ethics Commission. Now we have an outside investigation, and you're asking for that to be looked at by the state, so how much more do you need, I guess? I believe I heard a comment of "till it's done," and I would simply rebut that the truth is until you're satisfied with the answer.
No, until you're not.
Okay, well, that makes it more clear. We're not going to have comments from the audience, we'll have to do it in the microphone. We'll have to have comments from the audience in the microphone if you're going to make You want a code of conduct and you don't want to buy-bye it, come on, guys.
That was for us.
Okay. All right, is there anything else for the good of the city?
I do have one more thing, too. So, lastly, I'd like to make a motion for Dr. Kelly to send this report to the Florida Department of Professional Regulations and the Florida Real Estate Commission regarding the business dealings of Daniel Salz Real Estate.
What about sending a copy of the report to the Florida Ethics Commission?
He's not an elected official.
That's on there?
Okay, so is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Did you add that on there?
No, he can't go to the ethics because he's not an elected official, he doesn't...
So is there a second to the motion?
No, my question was, Mayor, can you give us some more?
No, she made a motion, there has to be a second in order for discussion to happen.
I need her to clarify the motion, and if she's willing to add more.
Yes, yes, I will.
Please state your motion again.
The motion for Dr. Kelly to send this report to the Florida Department of PBR, yeah, FLD PBR, the Florida Real Estate Commission regarding the dealings of Daniel Salz in addition to the Ethics Commission, if that applies.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
Now we have a second, is there a discussion? That's how this process works. Okay, seeing no discussion. Sorry, is there any questions?
Mr. Burr, I wouldn't have to abstain from this one since it has to do just with Daniel Salz. It doesn't have to do with anything with the report, it just has to do with Daniel Salz.
Yeah, if it doesn't involve you or anything that might inure to your pecuniary or proprietary interests, then you don't need to, and no other ethics aspects of it, then you don't need to abstain from it.
Is there someone who would like to speak after the second?
You have a question? Please give your name and address, we can in the microphone.
Maria Sutherland, 900 West Main. Considering the allegations that are in the investigation and the cause of the relationship between yourself and your sister and Mr. Salz, is this something that you could actually vote on? Shouldn't this also be abstained on?
Well, yeah, since you are...
between yourself and your sister and Mr. Salz, is this something that you could actually vote on? Shouldn't this also be abstained on?
Yeah, since you are, since the mayor is a relative, you can, then you probably should abstain if it's revolting something that has to do with the mayor.
Does it have anything to do with the mayor?
I don't know.
The motion, could you please restate the motion as you have it there?
Direct Dr. Kelly to send complaint to DBPR and Real Estate Commission for Salz, David Salz, and to the Ethics Commission.
I'll leave it up to Ellie to opine on that, but it would seem that since it involves the report going to other people to look at, then I think that it's, it does kind of implicate the mayor and possibly you and so, and...
I agree with you, although I think the motion was DBPR, Ethics Commission, and the Real Estate Commission, was that the third?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Burr. The, are we asking Dr. Kelly to send, send them for purposes of, like, do a complaint?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I agree with Ms. Burr.
That myself and Ms. McGuire should abstain.
Well, I think something, this would be my, my advice, but you should take the advice of your attorney and, and if you can't get that, then you should probably abstain anyway because you don't know the, the answer.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
I'll abstain since it involves this investigation.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
I'll abstain as it involves this investigation.
Vice Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes three to, three to zero with two abstains.
There you go.
Okay, and so my other couple last things. So, Mr. Burr, in your investigation, it was stated by the Gilchrist law firm, he suggested response pattern of passive legal oversight rather than proactive enforcement on ethics procurement protections. So, your job was to protect the city. In this instance, I don't feel like you did your job effectively. I can't sit here and say you weren't involved, but you left the city vulnerable and exposed to lawsuits. You've known about this since December of '24 and you decided to do nothing. This investigation revealed a pattern of passive legal oversight rather than protective enforcement of ethics or procurement, as mentioned. So, in light of this revelation, I'd like to make a motion to terminate your contract between the City of Avon Park, between the City of Avon Park and Saxon Gilmore immediately and also initiate the process to go out for RFP for legal counsel.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask the attorney on Zoom if myself and/or Ms. McGuire can vote on this. If she's still there.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that there would be a basis for you to abstain of this particular motion. If you have any doubts and you have a different counsel, then that would be pushing us, but I don't, yeah, we just choose this time.
You don't think that we have to abstain, you're saying?
Yes.
I have a question for the attorney. Well, let me ask Shelley first. Shelley, the reason for the terminating the contract was for what now? What was the motion?
Hold on, let me get my old lady glasses on.
The motion, the motion was to terminate the contract between the City of Avon Park and Saxon Gilmore immediately and to initiate the process to go out for RFP for legal counsel.
Okay, so nowhere in your motion it states why you was count, terminating the contract?
Just due to the investigation where it stays.
Of the brickle building?
Yes, of the brickle building, yes.
Okay, so my question to you, attorney, this is still about the brickle building, is it not?
The, I, I, what I, I just spoke about the brickle building, I think it's still the script, the, the agenda for, for the, for the meeting. The, what I heard originally that was related to the knowledge since December 2024, which I guess is not related to the investigation, I'm not really sure what knowledge you're being referred to, but I think it's...
Well, well, let me ask you this question. Do she need to restate her motion and perhaps add the brickle building in there for the reason of the termination, the brickle building investigation?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought she just wrote it back, she said that there is the, that is this investigation?
If you'd like, I'll reread it and restate it as I intended. So, Mr. Burr, in your investigation, well, in, I'm sorry, not Mr. Burr, but in the investigation, it was stated on page 30, Gilchrist found that your suggestions were like a passive legal oversight rather than proactive enforcement of ethics or procurement. So, due to the findings in the investigation because of the brickle building, I stated that your job is to protect the city. In this instance, I don't feel like you did your job effectively regarding the brickle building. I can sit here and say you were involved, but you left the city vulnerable and exposed for lawsuits. You've known about this brickle building since December 24 and you decided to do nothing. This investigation reveals a pattern of passive legal oversight than proactive enforcement of ethics or procurement protections, as mentioned. So, in light of this revelation, I make the motion to terminate your contract between the city and Saxon Gilmore immediately and we initiate the process to go out for RFP for legal counsel.
And I second it.
And, yeah, just a question.
What are we waiting on?
Her response.
Oh.
Do you have a response, ma'am?
I'm so sorry, I can't hear you all.
Do, do you have a response?
Oh, and the question was changed, revised regarding scope, I think it's clear that it's linked to this investigation.
So, do you think that myself and Ms. McGuire should not vote on this?
I don't know, I don't know enough about the, the involvement of the allegations if there's a connection, so I don't think I can advise you. I think you know more about that than I do.
Okay.
Like you always interest.
I'll ask the attorneys that did the report. Is there a proposed that there's some sort of connection and/or corruption between Mr. Burr and myself or Ms. McGuire?
I would say that this motion relates to the investigation and if you're being investigated, if you're being, if there are allegations against you in the investigation, that it's a conflict of interest to vote on anything related to the investigation.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. I have, I, as I mentioned earlier, I take great deference to the conclusion you made in that regard when we first start with the fact that, you know, it's not easy to represent a board which is constantly three, two, two, three, three, two, three, two, two, three, firing city managers every couple of years. But in spite of that, I've tried to say, keep even hand between whoever's here and I've talked to all of you by phone on a number of occasions, less with some than others, but still, that's the case. I spoke to you, Ms. McKeer, quite a bit about this before you brought the action and you asked me many questions about it and I answered them. And, you know, I told you at the time that, and I find it quite ironic that you make the motion now, given the fact that I told you at the time that we wouldn't be having this conversation about the CO if you had not voted to get rid of the, the protections that I built into the contract and were pointed out by Maria Sutherland, thank you, that I, it's even objected to it and still you voted for it. And yet, I'm going to be the one that's going to be blamed for that and somehow be blamed for anything that you alleged with regard to the other, the other claims as well, which is really ironic. But I would point out that I was here, I've been here for almost 20 years off and on simply because I was here and then you all decided, this board, not the same people here, not all the same people here, decided to move to an in-house counsel. And that lasted a year and a half before you asked me to come back and I did. And, and if you want to have somebody that is going to constantly look at every possibility, then you have, you should have in-house counsel. It's not, it's not possible for me to, to proactively go after every single issue because, you know, and in spite of the comments from the audience, it's not my job. My job is to do what I am told to do by either the city manager or the city council. Nobody ever asked me to review that. I've never been asked to review a, a CO and I've never been asked to review a inspection of a building to see whether the CO should have been issued or should not have been issued. I mean, it's kind of a ridiculous claim, actually. And, but had we'd been asked to do that, we could have done that. But we wouldn't have been competent to review the, the building, but we certainly could have reviewed the CO and we could have asked the questions that were necessary to be asked. But I only respond to what you asked me to do. If I did everything that I felt like should be done for the city, then I would have to hire associates and you would pay a whole lot more than you already do and you chose not to when you chose the manner in which you've been represented. And it's not going to change when you hire somebody else. Feel free to do as you wish because actually it's been my inclination, as I've told my wife several times, to go ahead and resign anyway because the, the audience is, is, well, I'm not going to get any further into that, just I'm going to say it, do as you wish.
So, I, I do remember back when we started discussing all this and, and Mayor Anderson asked you, "Mr. Burr, didn't you look over that, didn't you look over that deed?" No, you didn't. Somebody else in your firm did and they must have missed it. I, I do remember that conversation. You can deny it, but I do remember that.
Mr. Burr, Mr. Burr, I clearly remember that statement as well.
I said that we could have reviewed it, you know, if you asked us to do it. We don't review COs.
You said somebody else in your firm did.
That you say, okay, the CO has been issued, now you need to issue title. I've never heard that, that being done.
Okay.
Nobody does that.
Maybe you missed vote, but you said it.
But if you want to invent, if you want to invent that duty, then that is your obvious, that is your right to do so.
But, but Mr. Burr, I, I have a statement. Is it your job to view leases?
To do what?
To review leases.
Yes.
Okay.
When I'm directed to do so.
Okay, so, so Mr. Burr, it's only allegations is that there was a lot of benchmarks taken out of the, maybe the original or the second lease. After that, there was a lot of benchmarks taken out of it, which this council was not aware of. And I, I feel personally, if your law firm had reviewed the last lease, maybe this wouldn't happen, maybe we wouldn't be here today.
Clearly, you don't have any idea what you're saying.
Maybe I don't. I do know this, Mr. Burr. I know that...
We wrote the lease.
Mr. Burr, point of, point of order.
We put, we put those items in, into the lease that protected the city, they were removed by this commission.
Not all of them, Mr. Burr, not all of them.
I agree, you didn't vote for it and you, Mr. Bernard. But I'm saying, she raised the motion and she voted for it and I, I objected to it and I, I told her at the time, she called me and said that she was upset about this. I said, "Well, you know, that's, that would have, if you had those protections, we wouldn't even have in this, this discussion because there would have been inspections to meet the, those benchmarks."
I think you need to look back on your emails. I don't think I did that.
That was some phone conversations.
I don't know about that.
Well, I do know about it.
Okay.
But that's, that's fine. I, I, do as you wish. Like I said, I'm, I've been on the edge of resigning anyway. Obviously, I'm not wanted by the audience, at least, and so if that's your decision, I'd be happy to move on.
Craig, if I could just make a, a comment, my firm does a lot of, it's a general counsel, special counsel, so seeing from a couple of different strategies, I'm mostly litigation and I would say give some, maybe thought about the immediate nature of termination of a city attorney as litigation counsel, I see a lot of issues come up that get sent to me in those, a broad transition or no transition period, so that's just a comment to think about.
I think you should look at the city charter. The city charter requires that there's three votes to remove me. If you don't have three votes, then it can't happen. So, you know, if you want to remove me for some other reason, that's fine, but if you can remove me for the reason that causes them to have a conflict of interest, then that's where you're, you're sitting right now. Because if you check the charter, it, a removal of either me or the city manager requires three positive votes to do so. And so, you're going to only have two. Now, I, I still, I still, like I said, I'd be happy to resign and, and I'll even help you if you wish to, until you get to, or counsel, because, you know, I don't want to stay somewhere where I'm top one and, and I'm not, certainly not appreciated.
Name and address for the record, please.
Maria Sutherland, 900 West Main. I think you're making a grave error. I don't think that you should be scapegoating the city attorney on this issue and I, I know Shelley that I'm probably going against your mantra, but I don't know anybody more ethical with integrity than Jerry Bure. I've known him for almost 20 years and he has always, always represented the city well. I think this issue right now is not about the city attorney. He does not review COs. It's not his job to do that. That was the city managers and we already know that based off of the information that's been provided tonight. He doesn't review anything after a contract is done because he's not going to review the Main Street contract. In fact, that was taken away from him and it was you, Mayor Anderson and your sister, who voted to remove the reverter clause in that contract, which he vehemently opposed and reminded you that you should have protections on that building, but you insisted on changing that. And the other part of it as well is during the conversations that you had with the attorney that the rest of the council was unaware of because I've seen the invoices where he documented where you participated in the contract negotiations. Who were you working for? If you didn't tell the city attorney that you were involved in that building or that you were going to be the developer or that you were going to be investing in it, then he should, certainly would have advised not to proceed with that contract or for you to recuse yourself. So, the fact that he went the way he did was because of a lack of information or better yet, the lack of forthcomingness on your side. And even, don't roll your eyes, you know it's true.
Not true.
And no different than Brittany McGuire. Had he known that she was aware of her sister-in-law investing in your company, he would advised, had advised for her to recuse herself in the lease transfer and had that happened, she would have had to say why she was abstaining and that would have triggered questions from the rest of this council. So, by you off, by you not being truthful with him, puts him in the predicament where right now he's going to be terminated because of you. Do not scapegoat the city attorney.
Pure speculation.
Nope.
Pure speculation.
That's the truth.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mike Durham. I'm an attorney in town as well, and actually represent Mr. Madre. But I would have to concur with your counsel online. Jerry, and I'm going to call him Jerry, because I've known Jerry for years. Jerry's often very responsive. He's objective when he answers us. He represents the council very well. I think I was at the sheriff's office as general counsel, and we had to go at odds sometimes. He's always professional. So, I understand the position the council's in. But if you're without a ship, oftentimes your attorney is the last one standing. Your general councils are often there. I've done Jerry's job, not here. I've done the county attorney as well, and it's a tough role. I would ask you to set pause to that, review your charter, find out specifically what's going on. Nothing prohibits the council from seeking outside counsel for some of this stuff. And that might be a way, but Mr. Burr, I've worked with him, and I just want to, I couldn't let, see something like that happen without getting on the record.
Okay.
Anything else? Care to make a change to your motion?
No.
Name and address for the record, please.
Emilio Garibaldi, 126 West Main Street. Okay, so for clarification for everybody here, was there a motion made for the quiet title? And was there a motion made for the civil and criminal charges?
We're talking about Jerry Bier, sir, his role here at Avon Park.
I'm not talking about Jerry. I'm talking about something.
Then that's not this topic.
No, there hasn't been, but we're not done yet.
Is there anything else about Jerry Bier's position here?
I'll just make one comment, so everybody knows where I stand. Now is not the time to get rid of the city attorney. Now is when time when we need a city attorney who's experienced and knows everything that's going on here in the last five-plus years he's been here and before that. We can't leave the city unprotected without a legal person, and while we're out trying to find somebody, and the last time we did that, we found somebody that I didn't think was very qualified. So, I think if you want to take the option of saying, "Let's look for somebody for the beginning of next year," and keep Jerry for the next few meetings to have legal advice to get past this, I think that's what we should do. We shouldn't be jumping to try to do everything all at one time. I think you're really pushing the edge here. Jerry's been very good to the city. He's been very informative. He's done so many things for us without even charging us, and now is the time when we need him, you know? Even just there for protection at a city council meeting. So, you know where I stand.
Dr. Kelly, should this vote go through tonight, do we have legal counsel that we could fall back on as far as an interim attorney?
Yes, I believe Ellie just said that her law firm does public work.
Okay. So, we wouldn't be necessarily without an attorney?
We'd, no, but we'd still have to go out to RFP for a permanent one.
Right. But until then, we would not be without an attorney?
I'd have to speak with her about an engagement letter, but correct.
I would ask Ellie, if you look at the charter, am I correct that it requires three positive votes?
I saw the city manager, it's three for both of you, um, three votes.
So, really, the motion, if you have two abstentions, you're not going to have three votes. But like I said, I don't want to let anybody get upset. I'll resign if you want, if this is what you want. But, you know, and like I said, because this has been more than I care to do in the years that I've been doing this for thirty-three years. I don't care. I just wish the city would become happy one day. That's a true wish, but I don't know it's going to ever happen. But I really wish you all just become happy. But I will resign so we can remove that issue. And I will stay, if you wish, until such time as you either hire somebody or you get somebody else in temporary, whichever you prefer. You get what you want.
I'll just simply say that Jerry has done a lot for the city. I mean, Jerry's been there, been very dependable, been very forthright. You'll struggle to find an attorney that would have an ill opinion of him. He's done so much that he hasn't charged for. I mean, he's definitely gone above and beyond service, and I've certainly enjoyed working with him. I don't wish for him to resign. We need legal counsel more now than ever, and we really hope that we can find a stable way forward without continually cutting the head off of the city, without losing our, all of our management, all of our legal, you know? It seems like we're constantly struggling for direction, and I don't think this is the right move. Any other comments about this vote? Yes, ma'am. Name and address and the microphone there.
Barbara Arnold, 624th Street, Fort Meade, Florida.
Yes, ma'am.
I have to say, this is pitiful. You, Mr. Mayor, and I don't even know you, but you're going to sit there and let this man resign for something that you... Wait, don't interrupt me, please. You and your sister are guilty of doing. It's all in the area. And I see how condescending y'all are just sitting there. You're letting this man resign for something you did because you didn't take it to him to get his input, and that's sad. I hope you're going to be able to go home and sleep with yourself tonight, because there is a thing called truth, and that's what's wrong with a lot of our cities and commissioners. They don't know how to tell the truth. You get hung up with yourself and your money and your goals and what you can do for yourself, but you don't care about the person next to you, and that's sad.
Ma'am, with all due respect, with all due respect, I literally just said I do not want Jerry to resign. Jerry is not... Ma'am, you're not going to make comments out there. If you want to come back to the microphone, you can finish your comments. But that's completely unfactual, and I very much hope that the truth will come out, because the truth is not what has been stated here tonight.
Okay, you said for me to come back to the mic. I understand there's another guy involved in this. I don't remember what his name was.
Saul.
Who? Saul. Why hasn't that man been brought forward? Because from what I understand, you're involved with him, but y'all are going to keep quiet. You're going to sweep it under the rug. You're going to let all these people take the fall for it. For what? For what gain you get out of it?
Oh, ma'am, I've received no gain out of it.
Really?
That's what I asked them.
Well, that's probably because we, you probably need to get some more attorneys that can serve subpoenas and stuff and bring the people in. Bring Mr. Saul in so we can hear it from him, that y'all have nothing together. Because I've been sitting back here hearing people talk, how you and Mr. Saul's been meeting on the side, doing side things. So, there's got to be some truth going on here somewhere. It's just not coming from you.
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion. We have a second. Do you still wish to proceed with the vote?
Yes.
Okay. Waiting on one council person? So, I guess the question is if the charter says that there has to be three votes, and it fails having only two votes, it would just simply die. The motion would die. Is that correct?
Well, I defer to Ellie on that, but I believe that it had no effect, basically. It'd still be the motion, but, and the vote, but it would have no effect, because your charter says you can't do that. The charter that the people actually selected.
Ellie, would you concur with that?
I agree with him about the null effect.
Okay.
Could we, like, maybe go the back way?
The mayor's calling.
Yeah, if there's no other comments, then we'll start the opposite correction.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
No, I have one thing to say.
We're in the middle of the vote. If you'll wait a minute.
I got something to say. All right. You called me on the phone trying to dig out of my son about our gym down there, and you talked to me thirty minutes on the phone, and you told me yourself, Garrett, you had $750,000 in that building. You told me, "I'll get on a lie detector test," and you get on a lie detector test, buddy, and you will fail, because you told me you had $750,000 in that building, the Brickell Building. That's all I got. You did say that.
All right. As we were saying, starting with the vote?
I got there, too.
What's that?
I got there, too.
Okay.
You said no, right? Okay. Mayor Anderson?
I'll abstain, as the council has advised. The investigation involves me, and the motion was based off of the investigation from what I understand.
Councilmember McCur?
Yes.
If... Yeah.
He's coming.
So, the vote, could you please restate the motion?
The motion was to...
Terminate the contract.
Was to terminate the contract with the attorney, effective immediately, and to go out RFP for a new.
Everyone voted for you, obviously. The council had suggested that we abstain.
I'll abstain due to it and being involved with the allegation or the investigation.
Okay. Motion fails. Two yes, one no, and two abstains.
I'll ask either the mayor or councilmember McGuire, if either one of you are unhappy with my work here. I'll resign now and just assume that that will be the third vote, as far as I'm concerned. And so, I don't want to go forward with this. And as it is, I think we really ought to be thinking about a change in the future anyway, since it's obvious that a lot of the audience doesn't trust me now, since they clapped for the motion. And like I said, I don't want to go where I'm not appreciated. Working too long to deal with that. So, if either you or you are unhappy there, then I will resign now.
To be clear, I'm not unhappy with your service. I think you've done a fantastic job for Avon Park.
I'm not unhappy either. I find it kind of ironic that most of the time Shelley's fussing because you're saying no about something and being too strict. So, but then, for her to say you're getting fired for the complete opposite, I think is just ironic. So, I'm happy with your services.
Which, for the record, you have also stated out of your own mouth that you were a bit conservative on some things, correct? Okay, thank you.
Is that a bad thing?
Conservative would be the opposite, basically, of what you're saying.
Is that a bad thing to be conservative?
Whatever. Let's move on.
I got a question for Mr. Burr. Mr. Burr, we just found out that we need three votes for, to terminate your contract, and you keep saying you would resign. So, I'm going to ask you, would you resign?
I just said...
No, I'm just saying. It costs, you have two couns...
I just said that if there's three people on this council that don't want me, I don't assume that...
Mr. Burr, I'm saying whether you got one, two, or three.
No, I...
You would not.
If the council has trusted me, the majority of the council has trusted me, then I will stay. And, you know, but I think that, you know, I'm going to play to retirement anyway. So, at some point, you know, we're going to need to make a change. I did say that. But I'm not going to, I don't want to be forced to resign by, simply by being brow-beaten.
Mayor, may we reconsider letting the Gilcrest group go?
Yes.
Thank you.
You should have raised your hand a while ago. Sorry. I was, I believe in service. Yeah, I don't have any problems. Anybody have any objection to that? Okay. All right. Is there anything else? Can we get to the city? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing my opposition, we adjourn.
Please, please, stop.
Yes.